Welcome to this special closed session meeting in the City Council on Monday, July 11, 2022. I now call this meeting to order at 5:30. Please take the roll call.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Mayor Protem Infante.
Here.
Councilmember Arona.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Yurig. Here by Zoom.
There he is. Okay. Ms. Arona, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I'll be glad to.
Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there any public comment before this closed session? Madam Secretary, do we have any requests?
I see none on Zoom.
Okay.
And none in person.
In that case, I will recess this meeting and we will go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, subdivision D for this closed session will be a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation in one matter.
Thank you very much, Attorney. Appreciate it. I'll learn this schedule yet.
I forget myself.
All right. We go the other way.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we are back from closed session and we will take a break until we go to open session, public session at five, six thirty.
Mr. Mayor?
And we need to have a...
Close session announcement?
Thank you.
The city council met in closed session with legal counsel on one matter of anticipated litigation under government code section sixty-four nine fifty-six point nine. There was no report of law action.
Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney. In that case, we will adjourn for the next seven, eight minutes and we will resume.
Is that enough time to go over the law?
(laughing) No problem. Problem. All right, shall we proceed?
Yes.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the City Council on Monday, July 11, 2022. I now call the meeting to order at six thirty-one. Councilman Clark, if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
Sir, roll call.
We should do the roll call first.
Let's do that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Mayor Protem Advante?
Here.
Councilmember Arona?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Mayor Urick? President via remote.
There we go.
All right, now, if you would. Thank you, sir.
Picture right now over your heart, repeat after meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no proclamations or ceremonial items or commendation for this evening. I will make the statement that I am, as Mayor Protem, sitting in the mayor's seat this evening. The mayor has been close by with the COVID, so he is under house arrest. He's actually on Zoom and is in the meeting, but we get to ignore him now if we want to.
Don't even think about it.
All right. Public communications, non-agenda and consent items. If you would, Anne Marie, the secretary, if you would give us the information on what the public communications are.
The council welcomes your input. At this time, you may address the council on items not on the agenda and on consent. Time limit is three minutes and we will start with in-person public comment first.
Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to make a comment? No? In that case, I believe we have someone on Zoom, right?
I think I'm on. Betty Wells?
We can hear you. Please go ahead, Ms. Wells.
Yeah, I sent a letter today to the council, spoke to Anna Marie, and she said it would be in your packet.
It is?
Well, have you had a chance to read it?
This is public comment, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, but go ahead and give us the short abbreviated version of it, if you would, please.
Okay, well, I just got back from a trip and I got this letter just today, dated July 8th. And I see that the City Council, or the Planning Commission, gave them a variance to the properties at, let's see, sixteen eighty-eight Oak Street and three oh three, three ninety-three Aliso. I own the house at four oh three Aliso, right across the street. And when I bought my house, I had to do a lot of work to get it approved by the city. And one of the requirements, even though it's going to be a resident, was that I had to put in a handicap bathroom and a handicap parking. And I see with this variance that you've given them that they don't have to have any off-street parking. And I object vehemently against this because right now there's hardly any parking anywhere and people are parking. I built four vacation cottages, which took me three years to get approved through the city, with a lot of information that I had to abide by. And one of them was to have my parking spaces. And if you, if you don't have parking at these two vacation cottages, they will park in the street. And I found with my four vacation cottages that they don't move their cars, they walk all the time. And there are not any parking spots there for visitors that just come to stay for an hour or two. And they already began parking in my parking spots behind my vacation cottages. So I want to ask you to not, I know the Planning Commission approved it, but I don't know if the City Council has, and I think it needs to have a lot of study. As you can see on my letter to you, they had a, they have a garage there, they could park a car in the garage, they could also take out that block wall and curb and make a park. There's room enough for a parking spot there. I mean, I had to jump through hoops to get my places approved, and I think it's a wrong decision of the city to not have them have their own parking spots. The thrift store, there's no room for the people to go park, to go to the thrift store that is for the hospital fundraising store. And so they also park behind my cottages. And my experience is that my tenants, or the guests, do not move their cars, they walk everywhere in solving. So I think this was a really big mistake with the Planning Commission gave them that variance that they didn't have to put in parking spots. And I would like your opinions on how you feel about this.
It's public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. We can't give you opinions at this time because it has not been publicly made available for us to have the rest of the public involved. So we appreciate your information and I understand your comments. We will take it under advisement.
And when will their next meeting be on this? I was out of town for a month, I had no knowledge of this going on, so I couldn't attend their meeting.
Contact the city manager.
Yeah, but when will the next meeting be? I live in Santa Barbara.
When will it next?
If you want to get something on the agenda, contact the city manager.
Yeah. Thank you. As Councilman Clark just pointed out, if you want to get it on the agenda, please contact the city manager and we will get it on the agenda so that we can discuss it.
Mr. Mayor Protem, could I chime in on this?
Please.
Please.
This was a decision of the Planning Commission. There are provisions under the Planning Commission's rules as to whether or not someone wants to appeal it. There's really nothing for the council to address on this specific application that was approved by the Planning Commission last week until such time as there's an appeal. If there's no appeal, that decision became final as of the expiration of the appeal period. But I would advise against the council just taking up this matter in a free-form fashion to avoid any complications with the appeal process.
Are you aware it cost me a citizen fifteen hundred dollars to do an official appeal?
I am aware of that, ma'am, and that is to reimburse the city for its costs in processing the appeal through to the City Council, which involves a significant amount of work.
Well, it's a significant amount of money for me and also I was not notified about this, this meeting. I mean, I didn't know that they approved the variance. I had no knowledge of that until I got this letter today. This was the first correspondence. I don't see why I would have to pay fifteen hundred dollars to do something that is best for the community.
I understand you need to please get in touch with the city manager and let her, see if we can get something on the Planning Commission agenda then, so that we can go through it and the attorney will take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll do that.
Mr. Mayor Protem, can we explain how the public commenting works during council meetings?
Is your microphone on?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that, go ahead, please do.
Public comment by residents or participants in the city is for them to state concerns that are not on the agenda. It's not actionable items, it's not for the agenda to get into, not for the council to get into a back and forth, it's just a time where any resident can come to the city and share what's on their mind for items that are not on the agenda. And we, there's not really necessarily, there should not be a dialogue over that, although I appreciate the comments and concerns, that's how public comment works, just so people know that.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, and I do want to add to it that the reason why that happens is because if the council is going to discuss something, then everybody needs to have a right to know that we will be discussing it so that they can chime in.
Chime in, exactly.
So that's why we don't discuss it during public comment.
So how do I get it on the agenda? Because I was told by
Call the city manager.
Please.
The city clerk to contact you guys and as a non-agenda item.
Please contact the city manager.
Okay, they'll tell me how to do this, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to now move to the, if there's no more, public comment. I would like to move to the city manager's report, please.
Thank you, mayor and council. I just want to take a second here to share my presentation. Thank you all, this will be a fairly brief report. Just pointing out to everybody again, some of the meaningful events that are going to be coming forth, I'm looking for everybody's input. On July 18th, we will have a community workshop scheduled in the middle of town at the Soling Park from four to seven p.m. to gain community input on whether or not the community would like to continue considering a concept of a downtown European type of plaza for the city of Soling. That was one of the discussions that was started this part of the general plan update and was also council direction to continue through that process when Copenhagen was reopened. So this is meant to be really an open conversation for the public, that's why it's structured as this open forum in the open park where hopefully we'll get a lot of just passersby during that time as well as people who are more focused than usually are engaged in our surveys. So you'll have stations, staff and consultants set up from four to seven. We'll keep track of data based on residents' input, visitors' input, and business owners' or managers' input. So we'll be discussing, you know, some of the potential of the process of the general plan update, how this type of conceptual project could go forward if that was the community's desire, and also some of the elements and locations. We'll have some stations set up with screens and ability for folks to actually go live and input their feedback right at the park. And then we'll also have it to continue to be available for a few weeks after that. So we look for everyone's input on July 18th and hope to get really good participation. Also reminding everybody about the State of the City, which will be happening on August 24th at the Ford Craft House, so that will be taking place from eleven thirty a.m. to one thirty p.m. The city is participating in this along with the Chamber of Commerce, who are actually distributing the tickets to this event. So if you would like to attend this event, please go to the Chamber of Commerce website to purchase your tickets. Just want to remind about some of the things that the communities are moving forward with and working on. The Design Review Committee will be moving forward with conceptual review of the old lumberyard. I've kind of brought this up a few times before, but the applicant had actually wanted to refine the project and have delayed this review. So this will be coming back to the design, or coming to the Design Review Committee based on some of the work and the comments that the Planning Commission had made before. This would only be a conceptual review at this time. It would also be, for the Design Review Committee, will also be reviewing the old bank building redevelopment, which is planned to be at Elliott Market, and that will also be considered for conceptual review by the Design Review Committee for the design elements. The Soling Senior Center, we now have the application, so that project will be starting to move forward and will be first brought to the Design Review Committee and then to the Planning Commission at the August meeting. The Tourism Advisory Committee just held a meeting last week on July 7th and they had their first conversation with the new marketing agency. So the advocacy agency was onboarded starting on July 1st. They were there in person and interacting with the Tourism Advisory Committee. They have discussed their ninety days onboarded plan, which is essentially onboard organs, try to building and, sorry. I apologize, I'm working on it with the screen remotely. Let me just have one second to log back into my presentation, sorry about that. There you go, okay. So they are utilizing the assets that previous tourist, or previous marketing agency have produced. You would recall that much of the effort went into production of short videos, only a couple of those videos have been already released, and that's how it was planned. So we still have quite a bit of stock there that this new marketing agency can continue to collaborate on. They do have a lot of new ideas that they're bringing on as well. You will see a couple of graphics here on the slide that are kind of more traditional, almost transportation Anderson style, storybook type of advertisements that they want to push forward. So that conversation is kicking off with the Tourism Advisory Committee and will also be, continue to hire for the marketing manager, who will also be helpful in this process. Now, looking at the advanced calendar, as I mentioned before, and it's on your consent agenda, that we have no July committee meetings currently scheduled, so the council approved the resolution that meeting would potentially be canceled. We are starting negotiations with the Kingston Union Local nine eighty-six. That's kicking off actually tomorrow and will go through this week, so there's a potential that I will reach out to the City Council to schedule a closed session for that. Now, moving on to August month, there's a few notable items, which will be per your council prior direction, to look at the community satisfaction poll as well as the parking in new policies. And then we also have the request from the San Barbara County Fire Department to potentially look at alternative locations and a new fire station. So we'll be bringing that forward to you as part of a conceptual review at this point. When we see you next time, I will also be populating advanced calendar based on the recently approved work programs under the financial plan, so you will see the work product that you should expect over the next six months. That completes my report, thank you.
Does anybody have any comments on the city manager report? Okay. Any public comment? No? All right. Well, in that case, let's go to council comments and requests. Any comments, requests?
I do have a request and perhaps today would be a good time to address it since we are extending the contract of we are extending the contract of code enforcement. I would like to know what the rules are for keeping properties. I am concerned that there are several properties in very noticeable areas in town that are to be developed, and in the meantime, they're unkept. There's trash being collected there. There are floors and things being torn down before there is a permit of construction. There is a lot that had very beautiful landscaping. It's been taken over recently by a new Lizzie, and it's starting to look abandoned. And I don't think it's fair that we ask local businesses to comply with all of these sign ordinances when we don't request developers to take care of the properties while they have them developed. So I would like to see that we take care of that, so that lots that are yet to be built do not look trashed.
So you want to get that to the city staff to take a look at that?
Yes, yes.
Is this city property or personal property?
Well, this is personal property. This is private property.
So we need to have code enforcement talk to them?
Exactly, yes. And I just want to know, you know, how bad does it need to get before we step in?
Mr. Olds, you might be the person to answer that for us, I believe.
Councilmember or Mayor Jimmy Fonti?
Yes?
Code enforcement falls under the planning and administration. So we will be happy to, I think I understand council member Arona's comment, which proper issues referring to. So I would be happy to have a code enforcement officer take a look at it and take any action as necessary. And I'll also speak with the developer, who may be willing to just voluntarily make some actions.
The reason I was asking for Mr. Olds was I do not know what the policy is with regard to trash on personal property that becomes an eyesore in the city. And I was hoping maybe he had an explanation of that, because I don't know that we can actually use code enforcement if there isn't a code. How am I doing?
I'm happy to answer that, Mr. Mayor Proten.
Please.
There is provision under chapter five, the title of five, chapter three, meaning it's a vacant property that says that a person who owns or has charge of possession of a vacant lot will be found to create a nuisance with various provisions that are set forth, such as the storage or accumulation of lumber, trash, salvage materials, and so on. So we do have that code enforcement tool in our quiver, and we'll be able to talk with code enforcement about that.
So code enforcement is the proper way to go. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other comments or remarks? In that case, I have a few. So a couple of things. First off, on the pleasant side, I attended the Danish Ambassador's event.
Oh, so did I.
And it was wonderful. The Elverhoi put on a great meet and greet type of thing for the ambassador of the United States who was here. She was eloquently eloquent speaker and very, very interesting to talk to. And I did want to bring that out, that she did attend and had some great things to say about our little city. Couple of things. The last city council meeting noted an error in the budget for marketing, but yet that's that error was reported to the tourist advisory committee. So that $600,000 listing for marketing was wrong. We corrected that verbally. Apparently, it was not corrected in what was presented to the T A C. We need to correct that situation. I'd like to request that the new budget be presented to the council on the July 25th council meeting with all the grants included. We approved a budget last meeting. Then we approved some funding requests, and we've got some more this evening that we're going to talk about. I'd like to see what the total budget is with all of those. So I would ask my fellow council members if that is something that you would like to see also, and we can put on the 7/25 agenda.
I'm okay with that.
Yes? Okay. Thank you. The... I'd also like to see a procedure that presents the annual budget and the contract extensions at least two meetings before the end date of the contract or the budget. We just had to approve the budget on the last day, basically, of the month of the year. And I don't... I don't feel comfortable with that. I would like to see that that... There be a procedure in place that says that you have to have that budget to the council at least thirty days before the end of the year, so that we have a chance to catch up and see what the total impact of this is going to be. We just got out of closed session. We're going to have some serious cost impacts on this city. They're going to cost us, and we need to know what that budget is. I really would like to make sure that we have a chance to review this in depth every year and even periodically during the year. So I would request again a request again of the council that we look at a... Have the staff write up or present to us a procedure that says we must address the total budget at least thirty days before the end of the year, fiscal year. Is that acceptable?
Can the city manager chime in on that, Mr. Mayor Proten?
I'd love to. City manager?
Mayor Proten and council, just to address the few of these comments, the correction to the marketing budget was made during the final financial report and review. That was corrected and will reflect this in the final public budget that you'll be presenting online. And nothing additional has been presented to tourism advisory committees. So they just took the numbers, if they did, from what was presented during the presentation, and not the correction that was made verbally. When it comes to presenting the budget thirty days in advance, I would say that that would be highly unusual for jurisdictions to have the budget done that early. The preliminary budget is done ahead of time, and that gives you an opportunity to provide with any direction to staff in order to bring it to you for the final adoption. If you would like to, as part of the next financial plan development, to have it heard on the first meeting in June, that is something that staff can definitely work on. So those are the comments that I would be happy to continue with the city council discussing the process of the budget. The next budget that you will be hearing a year from now will be the supplemental budget rather than a two-year financial plan development, which is a bigger effort, which starts with the community inputs and the engagement and the goals in session. So the supplemental budget will be a much smaller shift in those terms.
Okay. But I would still like to see what the total budget is, because I don't have any idea right now with everything we've been adding, and we'll add this evening, I guess. So we need to have a little bit more information, and I would like it to be a little bit earlier next year. Thank you.
Understood. We'll continue to bring those discussions and the policies for development of the next financial plan forward, and all of the changes to the adopted budget will be reflected and posted online.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
If I may chime in. I was trying to hit my mute button. It didn't go quite away. Just real quick. Thank you all for representing the city in the July 4th Independence Day parade. It was great to see all of you out there. And thank you for the sign that the staff made. I probably appreciate that. We... It's hard to know numbers-wise. Just a rough estimate would probably be probably 4,000 people were downtown for that part of the parade. It was... That's probably the longest one that I can remember in eighteen years of doing that parade. So it was very well-attended, as well as a number of participants. I know I talked with the organizers, and they had almost seventy entrants that were part of that, and usually were, you know, more like sixty. And a lot of those were not just one person. There were a lot of participants in one of those entries. So it was really nice to see that. It was real great to be able to have that outside on the main drag. I think a lot of people really appreciated that. And that was the Soling Rotary that puts that on. And I know that there were some concerns about the cost that they're having there. So I wondered if that might be something that we can bring to the council for some consideration for that particular event, because typically, we ask the organizers to provide the funds needed for certain things. I'm not sure what that final bill was, but it was enough where within a couple of days of that parade that the organizer were asking if I could do something about it. So all I can tell them right now is we'll maybe look into it and just see what all those costs were. The Corstainas Valley Rotary did the fireworks show, and that, I don't know, hands down to me, that was one of the best ones I had ever seen. And it was nice to have everyone out there. There was quite a few people in front of the stage, which was set up differently. And a lot of people participated in that. I don't have the final numbers for that yet. I'm sure we'll be getting something back from the Sandis Valley Rotary. But again, appreciate them putting that on for the city and the community. Very well-attended, and I believe traffic wasn't as bad as it has been in the past. There were long lines, as they usually are, going west on Mission Drive and trying to get out of all the little areas of downtown. But overall, I think it moved pretty quick, and by about 10:15, most of the traffic had dissipated to at least a manageable state, which usually it's an hour, an hour and a half. So that was nice. That was all. I was also a part of the being here with the Danish ambassador. That was very nice to be able to meet her. And hopefully, we can start a dialogue with Alborn. I think she recommended that we try to on... Try to figure out a way that we can get our sister city back in line with us. It sounds like it's been many, many years that there's been anything going on with our sister city in Denmark. But also, this was her last time on the West Coast, and she will now be, instead of just the Danish ambassador to the U.S., she will be Denmark's representative, starting in September, to NATO, which a really big honor for her. So that was nice to be able to have the last time on the West Coast with her until she now starts moving to, I think it's Sweden where they have those. So that was nice that Mayor Proten, Fonti, and myself were able to be there and have some time with her and had a little bit of a dinner. So that was nice. Lastly, just the number for food distribution was last July 5th, there were... Oh, my gosh. Wrong thing. So I don't know. There will be no food distribution tomorrow, but they'll be back again at it next week. So that pretty much concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, mayor. Okay, so item number four on the agenda then are the consent items. And I would ask if anybody has any consent items that they would like to pull or discuss?
I have none.
I have four. Just to make it easy on everybody.
I have a few, but I think they might be the same. So why don't you just go ahead?
All right. Thank you, mayor. 4E has a tree maintenance contract. That needs to be reviewed, whether we want to do an RFP on that. That went from, I believe, $70,000 to $120,000. The listing of the trees listed, I think, one address with 200 trees on it. Something seems off. We need an explanation. So I would like that pulled and moved to the 7/25 council meeting agenda. Item 4H is the Minter Harnish contract. This is an extension, has no fiscal impact. It had a couple things of question in my mind, and I would like to pursue those questions of why some of their subcontractors are contracting directly with us instead of with Minter Harnish, a couple of things like that. So I'd like to pull that item and move it to the next council meeting as well. 4J is the project assessment master plan that I think needs some discussion. We have an old master plan. I'd like to know what the update details on this are, and I'd like to move that to the 7/25 meeting as well. 4N, my notes says page 578. Oh, that was an old exhibit in there, and I cleared that up for myself. And then 4O, I'd like to refuse that, and I'd like the council to say, we're not going to cancel the next meeting. We are going to bring these items to the next meeting and discuss them. So I asked the council for their comments on that. Mayor, you want to pipe up?
Sure. I would concur, especially on 4E, which is the tree contract. My understanding from when we had that earlier in the year was that we were going to already have it RFPed, and I don't know why that didn't happen. But I just want to make sure that we have a corrected or an updated list of the trees, because as Mayor Proten and Fonti alluded to, one of the items was 658 Alisol, which started on page 76 and ended on page 90, and it shows 210 trees assigned to that particular address. There was 150 trees assigned to 701 Alisol from page 90 to 100, and there were 111 trees assigned to the two... It just says two, but it's for the park, I believe, probably down there on Alisol, the commons. Alisol common, 111 trees to that. And yet, HCA only shows 105 assigned to it, and that just seems like that doesn't seem quite right. So I just kind of want to make sure that what we're approving with this upgrade is that at least we're talking the same amount of trees. The other one that I was thinking about was item G, which was not unreasonable, except that in our budget, from June 27, on page 131, it shows 40,000, and that's supposed to be for a year. And this request is for 46,000, but only through the remainder of this year, it actually has to stop. The original contract back in 2017 was for $18,783, and in it, it states that work is supposed to start from 7:30 to 5:30 P... 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And the new amendment, it says it can start at 7 and only go to 4. So I'd like to figure out, like to at least have the times aligned if all it's going to be is just an expansion. And then it also, in the original, says that we're supposed to get a quarterly report of the amount of work that they do and/or recommend the fixes on some of the areas with the sidewalk and the brick and overlays and all that. And I just wanted to make sure that we're... wanted to make sure that we're actually getting that four times a year. So that was another one that was just a little bit different than yours.
That was 4G, Mayor?
4G.
Thank you.
I wanted a clarification from Roger. Is it supposed to be 46 through the remainder of the year only? Or is it for the entire year? Because it specifically said in the report that it was just through the remainder of the year.
Mr. Mayor, I've met with California Concrete Grinding, and the explanation that was given to me was that, over the past couple of years, they have done the surveys, but they haven't done any of the grinding yet. They're a little backlog on the grinding. And so I discussed with them about their pricing and said, we want to see if we can stay with consistent pricing. They offered to do the backlog and what they have under the current contract for the current pricing. They suggested it would be about 46,000. They haven't, they haven't done the work. They haven't been paid for the work because they haven't done it. But they do have a backlog of grinding that they do intend to do over, for the next six months or so. And at which point, then, we would negotiate or put out an RFP and see if we want to continue our, continue our relationship or go with somebody else. But that's, that's the reason. So to answer your question, that's the reason why it is for the next six months, is for the current, it's the current pricing and the current billing rates for the contract that is a couple of years old now.
So then, just to clarify, the 18,000 that started it out and the 40,000 from the year before, none of that's been paid?
I can only speak to, from my time here. I know that they haven't done anything. And from what they told me is they haven't been able to, due to various reasons, they haven't been able to make it in to actually do the, do the grinding. So that, that work has not been done, and I have not received an invoice for that work. But they have done the survey work. And I did request that they, they did get to me all the survey data. And part of what I'm trying to do is analyze what sidewalks need to be done, because the grinding work that they do can only do so much. There are certain areas that we need to make a capital project, which we've, we have an item now in our new capital budget to repair and replace some concrete.
Pull the microphone up in front of you. I'm hearing that you can't be heard on the TV broadcast.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
But you're done now. It's a little late. Thank you, Mr. Rolles.
So do you think two weeks would be enough time if we put this on for the next one? For you to be able to review some of that report and figure out what you actually want to do with it?
Absolutely. Also, the next two weeks, as far as the West Coast Arborists, it sounds like the tree listing is pretty, more substantial than what it needs to be. But I can't, I can't speak to why the number has gone up, if you would like an answer now on that?
No.
Or you want to wait for two weeks?
Yeah, I think, I think I was, I'm fine with waiting two weeks. Just wanted to make sure we had some clarification on that.
Okay.
Because the last time that I remember having this, and now I'm talking about the tree arborists, is that my understanding was that we have maybe an inventory of 500 trees. And just in those four addresses, that's already more than that. So something's not working out exactly right. And I just want to make sure, you know, I understand costs have gone up from 70,000 to 120,000. That's a significant adjustment.
Right. And I can speak to that in two weeks, if you like, or now.
Please.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to ask the council if they would agree to moving items 4E, 4H, 4J, 4G to the 7/25 meeting, which means not accepting item 4O, which is a cancellation of that meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
You? Okay. All four of us then? And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So it's all five of us agree that that needs to be moved to the next meeting on the seven, on the 25th of this month?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion for this specifically, do we? Because this is just consent agenda?
Well, you'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole. But you will be pulling the items 4E, 4H, 4J, and 4G. And also noting that 4O, apart from the consent agenda, would be a no if that's the way the council wishes to go. But the balance of the consent agenda will be approved.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus items E, G, H, J, and sidelining O as, as listed.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Council, Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Cham Infante?
Yes.
Councilmember Aruna?
I am abstaining from voting on item F, and I am voting yes for the rest of the motion.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Yuric?
Yes.
Motion passes 4O, excuse me, 5O, except for item F, which is 41.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to public hearings. So number five on the agenda, I believe it is, is the, get down there real quick. Oops. If you would read that, please, Madam Clark?
Public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution number 221185, amending the appropriation limit for fiscal year 2223 pursuant to Article 13 of the California Constitution. Open the public hearing, receive public comments, close the public hearing, and adopt resolution number 221185.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience in the room wish to make a comment on this? Seeing none? Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to make a public comment on this? No? Counsel, do we have any comments on this? Or a motion?
Mayor Pro-Cham Infante?
Is there a?
Oh, the.
Just the item?
We need the city manager's report.
This is essentially a required step as part of approval of the budget on a annual basis. It's required by the California law. What you're doing is looking at the calculation and how it's prepared, comparing the statutory GAAM limit, which is really set for us of our population of over $20 million. It's grown a little bit from last year. So you'll see it very forward. Our general fund revenues in total, which, majority of which are subject to this GAAM limit, are only just about $10 million. So the city of Solvang is far from reaching its limitations. And we are, you can approve this as presented.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question, just, just to understand what we're talking about. What happens if a city goes over the, the limit for appropriation?
So you would only be able to go up to their appropriations. It's highly, as you can see, the gap for us is rather large. So even if the city had some additional taxes, we are very far away by about $10 million from our limitation. But the statutory limit is at that limitation, which is every jurisdiction has to calculate this calculation every
Basically, we can't do that.
So you wouldn't be able, if our revenues were at, you know, $26 million, you know, our GAAM limit was at $21 million, you wouldn't be able to do 26 in terms of your appropriations.
So what does that mean? Does that mean then you, you lower taxes, you give money back? I, I just, yeah, hypothetically, I had never, yeah, this is just new to me.
So you wouldn't be able to appropriate more than your limitation. I don't see a change in any additional comments.
It's basically just an opportunity for a city to make sure that it's faced within its needs. So you set this limit, and you cannot, you cannot spend more than you take in. I can't even think of a city in California that has exceeded its GAAM limit since the GAAM limit was imposed. There are some cities that are closer to that limit, but I've never seen a situation in California where it's exceeded.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Can we get a motion then to accept?
I'll make a motion. We adopt resolution number 221185, amending the appropriation limit for fiscal year 2022, 2023 pursuant to Article 13B of the California Constitution.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Cham Infante?
Yes.
Councilmember Aruna?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Yuric?
Yes.
Motion passes 5O.
Okay. Let's move to agenda item six. We have a staff report?
We have become counsel. Mayor, this is an item that got requested during our last council meeting. As you would recall, you had adopted a grant funding policy in January winter when you started developing the financial plan for the next two years, which was 2024. Your policy does state that you would consider awarding grants for nonprofits, for services that are not of the industry of the nature, and services that are humanitarian in nature, and focusing specifically on senior services. The city does not currently have a funding policy for events. It's unknown how many applications there would be if the city was accepting applications for events. You did fund two special events as part of your budget process, which were essentially events that were funded by the city for years and were funded by the city under prior grant funding policies. Those were Danish Days and Fourth of July. So what you have in front of you is a request that came from Vashti for the Juneteenth event of 2022. She had approached myself and, I believe, the mayor, and her response was for her, that there's no current process for funding any special events, and that she could speak in public comment potentially, which is what she did. So this item is in front of you for your consideration. As you would note in staff report, that obviously the city has limited funds and can, could not offer assistance to all nonprofits and all causes of the nonprofit sector within the Solvang community, which is very important services that they provide. But as far as application of the tax dollars is something that we only apply to that process based on your policy. So the recommendation is for you to consider this request, which came directly from the event provider, and provides staff with policy direction on how you'd like to proceed.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No.
I just have some comments. And I requested for this item to be on the agenda because, first of all, if anybody, if anybody wants to submit a request for funding for their nonprofit in the valley, as many of them do, you know, the process should feel, should be clear. And I just felt, after looking at the communication between the organizer and the city, that it was not clear what the process was. So I felt that she should have the, the option of applying if it's not, if it's not on her, that there was a miscommunication. So that's why I asked this to come forward. Generally, yes, we do not fund events. However, I don't think there is a precedent for not funding events when we are already granting money to Fourth of July Parade and Danish Days. So I felt that it was fair, that they should have a shot if they wanted to. And I want to make a, a comment on, because this, I felt it's not just an event, but this is about promoting Solvang as an inclusive community. So it's not merely for, you know, a celebration, but it's also a way of showing community members that they belong, that they might not be shown that. And those are the comments that I have to make. Again, it's too bad that we are in this situation when the event has already passed and we're trying to make amends. But going forward, everybody should have the same opportunity to apply for grants if they want to, whether it is the policy of the city to fund them or not.
Any other comments?
Ma, I have a comment.
Please.
I, I think that it's absolutely wonderful that, that people take it upon themselves to offer their time and treasure, and I've said this before, to, to do things that help other people. However, I do not think that it's the taxpayers' responsibility to fund everything that comes before the council for all these wonderful, wonderful causes. Personally, I would be happy to donate $250 of my own money, but I can't support giving money. And I didn't run on giving tax dollars away for everybody that asked for it. I just, I can't do it. So that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else? A couple of comments. I'm sorry, before I go to that, Mayor, did you want to make a comment?
I guess, yeah. Well, I wasn't sure if you were going to go first, but you're moderating the meeting.
I'm trying.
Yeah, I, I kind of feel the same as Councilmember Aruna. And I, I do have some concerns, though, that, at least with the application, it doesn't appear that the application was filled out. I'm not exactly sure why. And so there's no itemization of what these costs are for.
Right.
But just going forward, I feel as far as events, we, we have funded quite a bit of money for Danish Days. I understand the heritage. We also just funded quite a bit for the fireworks show. At this point, there is no funding that we did for the parade. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, that there, the city has not put any money towards the actual parade for the community on that particular item yet. So just want to set the record straight on that. But as far as going forward here, we have in the past, especially with items that sometimes feel like you're trying to make right, we have given waivers for items that the city would have charged for. So again, I'm not sure what all of these are for, because there was no application that was completed. It looks like it's just a letter that was written. And, you know, I love what, what Maddie has done, and, you know, what Vashti has done for her daughter and for this community. I'm not sure I can go along with that amount of money to fund, but I would be amenable to itemized, an itemized list. And so if there was fees for the park or for some other things such as that, we have waived those in the past, and that's what I would be asking for on this end.
Thank you. I would concur with both of you gentlemen.
I have a comment as well.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's a, it's a great organization, and I, I support it 100%. My only concern is that the request is for an amount, but we don't know what the expenses were.
No.
So normally, we would, you know, look at reimbursing expenses as opposed to just a grant without any representation of what the funds were spent on. And that, that would be my concern.
Thank you. And I would agree with that completely. We, this is an after the fact, not a before the fact. I completely agree with the mayor that, that giving back or waiving the costs of renting the park, absolutely not a problem. We're, we're, we're having a problem. We potentially have a problem with everybody else. Because what I'm going to hear in a few minutes, I'm sure, is, while you did that event, why can't you do this event? And how many other people are going to come up with that same excuse? If we fund this event after the fact, particularly without an explanation of the costs, what are we going to hear next? I, I am hesitant, I'm definitely hesitant to go for the full amount. And I'm hesitant to do too much more than that. I will to do too much more than that. I will match Councilman Clark's personal donation. I'll put $250 into it, too. I like the organization. I want to support them. But I am hesitant as a member of the council in the city of making that official. No other comments?
No.
I will be matching your donation as well.
Thank you very much. In this case, I'd like to go for public comment. I'm sorry. You're not the correct one. Public comment. And I suspect Vashti has something to say.
Hello, counsel. Thank you for allowing me to speak. To be very clear about this request, I sent an email last year inquiring as to the process, if there was funding available or the process to request such funding. And I was told that only Danish Days was funded. I did not have any idea that you could actually make a request. I was told by other citizens, other residents of the city that I could do so. And then I reached out via email four different times to Xena. I did not receive a response. I then found out what time she was having a meeting, and I came here and I sat outside and waited for her meeting to end. And then she told me that she would be able to speak to me at 5:30. So then I had to leave and get my daughter situated from school, come back here and wait another 30 minutes to find out what the process was. I was told to send another email, which I did. And then I was told that I needed to send a letter, which I did. I asked what needed to be included that letter, which is why it has what stated. I was then told that I needed to present to the Tourism Advisory Council, which I did, which took another almost three hours of my time. After that, I was instructed to come here for public comment twice. Again, you've seen me here numerous times, many hours of my time. I get paid, you know, a substantial amount to consult. When I have to come here for hours, not only do I have to hire my nanny, but I also have to make time in my schedule to do so. And so I came with the public comments. I sent follow-up emails, still did not get a clear response. I was told the last meeting to be here, that I inquired as to why the item was not on the agenda, was told that it was on the agenda. So I came here and sat for another three hours. I had to delay our vacation, make accommodations for that. And then I had to come back to this meeting. If I had been asked to itemize the items requested, and to be clear, my background is not only in marketing, but it's also in contracting because I was a contracting officer for the Air Force and civilian. So Boeing, GKN, LMI. I am very astute, and I'm very much I'm very good at, you tell me what you need to have, I'll ensure you get it. At no time was it an itemized list because I ask those questions. And so with this issue, the reason why it's coming after the fact is because I started this process approximately two and a half months before the event. And I did every single thing that I was told to do. I've spent over 30 hours of my time now with this one request of $5,000. I understand that there are other events, but Juneteenth is a federal holiday. This is our third annual Juneteenth. We have personally adopted the cost for this event. However, this particular event brought a certain amount of diversity to the city that has not been seen for any other event. And the cost that we have endured and we've undertaken far surpass the $5,000 that we are requesting. This event is for a holiday that is a federally recognized holiday that brought a certain tourism demographic that is not normally seen here. It literally adopts the fifth goal that you have as far as diversifying tourism and supporting a local organization. And in addition to that, Maddie's treasure box has brought millions of marketing dollars, free marketing dollars to the city of solving, because every single time that name is used, it is connected to solving. And if you have any of your marketing people, look at the amount of free tourism dollars and marketing dollars and posts and they call them mentions for solving. That number increased significantly when that business, that nonprofit, started being used. And she got a good amount of publicity for this Juneteenth event. So for me, I am a little bit it I find it to be inequitable that I had to take all those steps for this request. I find it inequitable that, yes, July 4th, National is Independence Day, it's a federal holiday, and so is Juneteenth. We are literally an organization that is local. We have our business license. We have our business office here. We work locally. And all of the work we do is to bring tourism and to bring people to this city. And we do that all year long, and we don't ask for anything. We do this out of our own pockets of the money that we are able to get and sustain. And so I do request the full amount, the $5,000. I'd be more than happy to itemize what that money went toward and the total cost of the event. And again, I would have been more than happy if it had been asked to me before. But I put in the letter specifically what I was told to put in the letter. And I would I would recommend that this process be clear for all nonprofits, all organizations moving forward, so that there is not an appearance of impropriety.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would agree, we need to have a little bit better policy on that. Any other public comment on this issue? Anybody on Zoom want to make a comment on this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Last comments, motions. What would you like to do?
Mayor Protem Infante, if I may just clarify, the cost that was paid to the city for this event was $135,000 for rent of the park.
Yeah, say that one more time, please. I didn't understand.
The cost that was collected by the city for this event was $135,000 was the fee that we charged for the park, use of the park application.
$135,000?
$135,000?
No, I'm sorry, $135.
That's what I thought the rate was.
It's an expensive park!
I didn't know we were worth that much.
Seriously.
Holy moly. Roger, you're underpaid.
I would make a motion that we would give the Juneteenth folks. Is Madison's treasure box a 501(c)(3)?
It is a nonprofit. I sent the letter to Xena.
That's a nonprofit. 501(c)(3) is a charity.
It's registered in the state of California as a...
Nonprofit. I looked it up. It's not a charity. So that's...
There's 501(c)(3), which is the IRS, and that allows you to take the tax deductible donations. And then there's a 501(c), which is for the state of California.
I'd be willing to make a personal donation, but I just I've already got friends and neighbors upset with me for not approving their requests. And I just I just can't. This is same with everything else that's come before me. I have to vote no.
So your motion is to deny the request?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second? Do I have another motion?
I would make a motion that to help offset the cost, because we don't know what the costs were. And I think the $5,000 was an arbitrary cost. But I make a motion that we that we for $2,500 for this particular event and ask in the future that any any actual costs going toward the event be made available.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Clark.
No.
Mayor Protem Infante.
Yes.
Councilmember Arona.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Urick.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you. I believe that was item number seven. Okay, so let's move to item number eight, please.
Seven, therapeutic.
Sorry, I got the wrong one. Seven, please. Oh, yeah, there it is. My apologies. Staff report, please.
So item number seven is in regards to a request for the therapeutic writing program funding request. Unlike the prior item, this particular request could have actually fallen under your existing policy for grant funding, but an application was not submitted by the applicant during the time period when the grant funding applications were open for submittal. So the process is the city council adopts a grant funding policy, staff then publishes the policy and opens up the application period, and applications are received. That is why this was not originally presented to you as part of the financial plan adoption considerations. However, Councilmember Thomas have requested you of council, and it was general consensus, to go ahead and place this item on council consideration. The request is for $5,000, and it does meet all of your policy criteria for the grant funding.
Any questions for staff?
No.
I have one. What have they historically received from us? Wasn't it 2,500?
No, it's always been 5,000.
I recall it being 5,000.
It was 5,000 once, too, for current. He has lost it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any public comment on this issue in the building? Any public comment on Zoom? Okay, they're all being quiet. Bring it back to the council. Can I have a motion, please?
Before, I just want to say, I understand that they had a change of management, but we just denied a full grant to another organization for not following the procedure, even though we failed to apply. So I also don't feel comfortable granting the full amount. If this organization, however, historically, they have really received the fund, they did not follow the procedures either.
I will say...
Actually, they did. I didn't. It was my responsibility to put it on, and I didn't do it in time. I think I made that comment when this first came up two meetings ago and asked if we could consider the 5,000, which we had done the year before. It's not an event. It goes to, you know, I could give you all of the therapeutic writing center who goes to the PTSD vets, artistic kids, if you've ever been out there and seen what healing that this does. I mean, it's worth a lot more, frankly. And so I don't blame the applicant. You can blame me. But if you want to make, you know, your motion at 2,500, then that's fine. I'm still going to push for the amount that I agreed to try and get and that they've had in the past, including last year, $5,000.
Mr. Mayor Protem, would you need to recuse yourself on this if you were involved in the submittal?
In the submittal?
Of the of the request.
Well, they sent it to us.
Okay, you weren't involved with the...
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
The one thing I did like about this, which we never got before, was look at the cost evaluation. Here's all their costs. Here's their individual funding. Here's what they've expended. This is a profit and loss statement. It says where their money goes and where what they get in. So now we understand what it is that they're looking for and who else is helping them. This is the kind of thing that I would prefer to see when somebody has a funding request. Because this is a full, open book to me, and I like this very much. They're not trying to hide anything. They're not making any claims beyond what they've written right here. So I that's my two cents. Any other comments?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we go ahead with the $5,000 grant.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Clark?
No.
Mayor Protem Infante?
Yes.
Councilmember Arona?
No.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Urick?
No.
Motion fails 2-3.
Okay, now we can go to number eight. Finally got my number straight. Okay, so now...
Can we make a different motion?
I would entertain that.
Well, well, if we failed the motion, I guess we can. My apologies, Mayor. Yeah, please. Did you want to do that?
Well, I kind of agreed with Councilmember Arona about, and while I understand Councilmember Thomas is taking the blame for it, I still feel that, you know, they didn't follow through or whoever didn't follow through, and it ends up becoming somewhat of a precedent. And I mean, I would go ahead and make a motion for 2,500.
Do I have a second?
I'll...
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Infante?
Yes.
Councilmember Arona?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Urick?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Much better. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking up, Mayor. I appreciate that. Okay, so item number eight, Chamber of Commerce contract funding request. Staff report, please.
If I may, Mr. Mayor Protem, I do not believe there is a conflict of interest. However, I do see that my business and even my picture is prominently pictured in the report. And the Chamber of Commerce supports my business like it supports all their green businesses and all other businesses in town. We have collaborated with them in parades, just as we have collaborated with other organizations such as the Senior Center or the Adderlag Village. But just to avoid the look of impropriety, I will be recusing myself from this item.
Thank you very much. Okay. Staff report, please.
Thank you, counsel. So this item in front of you is a request from the Chamber of Commerce for essentially what you consider contract for services. The proposal was proposed to the city directly by the Chamber of Commerce without the city's solicitation. It's in front of you. It's the same proposal as you saw during the financial plan adoption, at which point we awarded $50,000 towards the maps expressly or print of the maps. And you directed us to come back to you with further presentation. So the Chamber of Commerce is seeking an additional $200,000 for specific tasks, as is included in your packet, which was prepared by the Chamber of Commerce. They have also sent in additional information and a presentation here tonight that's in front of you. And I believe there's a representative of the Chamber of Commerce who is prepared to present this information.
Do me a favor, or all of us a favor, please speak directly into the microphone. I'm getting people telling me they can't hear it on the broadcast, so...
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Walters. I'm the superintendent president at Allen Hancock College. And I've kind of lost track of how long I've been on the Chamber of Commerce Board here in solving. We appreciate the opportunity to address this. And at our last meeting, the executive committee said that maybe the council's tired of hearing Tracy and Dan and Charles Warner, and so they sent me up. And I also actually have a background. I came out of the business side in higher education. And I thought I would go through the presentation and try to make some sense of it. And after after looking at our presentation, I can understand why the council's confused. It I couldn't get it to tie out. And I finally sat down with Tracy, and we got it all tied out. So we do have a little presentation that's different than what you saw on the it's most of the same slides, but we cleaned it up quite a bit. And unfortunately, for Councilmember Arona, I actually had taken her picture out because it seemed to be kind of cluttering. So, yes, sir.
Would that make a difference, her picture and her recusal?
I'm going to have to ask the attorney on that if that makes a difference on her recusal.
I'm sorry, that microphone wasn't on for that question, so I wasn't able to hear it.
Oh. Oh, Jim, yours, yeah.
Councilmember Arona recused herself because a picture of her family's trolley was in their, one of the books are in their material. However, it is not there now at this presentation. I don't think that that was a direct result of that issue. So without her family's trolley not being actually part of the presentation, would that have an impact on her recusal?
Well, I originally spoke with Councilmember Arona about this and I didn't believe that there was a conflict as a result of the photo appearing in there, but as a means to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I told her that if she chose to step down, that would be acceptable. It's really a personal decision for each council member to make with respect to conflicts of interest because ultimately it's up to the council member to make that determination. If the FPPC comes in, it's going to be a sanction against an individual council member and not the council as a whole. So it would be a question more appropriately suited towards Councilmember Arona, but I did not see any conflict in her appearance in the guy in the first place.
Would it be appropriate to go out and speak with her? I mean, this is a pretty big ticket item. It'd be nice if we had all five of us.
Yeah, it would, but are you going to speak with her, Jose? Appreciate it.
Well, while they're doing that, I'll at least say how much I enjoyed the fireworks myself. I can't remember who said, my wife and I came down and stayed at a hotel here in town and walked out, I was like, that's the best fireworks show I'd ever seen anywhere. I understand the solving local guy was the one who put it together and it looked like he took care of his hometown, so we had a great time.
She doesn't want to do it?
She's sitting out.
Okay.
Okay.
She's officially out. Thank you very much for the time to check into that. Thank you, Jose.
Let's see, there we go. So I'm just going to, you know what the chamber does and we're a catalyst and a convenor and a champion and we've been doing a lot of good work here in solving, all kinds of events and branding, putting on the state of the city, working with the SBDC to help local businesses. We've been very proud of the work we've done, particularly to help businesses get PPP loans and all of the other types of loans that came through during the pandemic. We've hosted a bunch of events and there have been good partners with us at PCPA, Allen Hancock College, and we've put together a bunch of really good commercials. You have these in your packet and we can, you have electronic copies of this too if you want to watch some of the commercials. If you haven't seen them, they're pretty good. And David Hefferman is actually here from KUIT in Fox 11, but I wanted to show you why we were spending money on KUIT and Fox 11. We actually have coverage up and down the central coast and the idea being that not enough people from Paso Robles are coming to solving and not enough people are coming to Ventura, or worse yet, people are coming from Ventura and passing us up and going to Cambria or going to Paso or going to Monterey when we want them to come here. So the marketing, almost the local staycation kind of ideas, what we did there, these actually also get us into, News Channel 3 gets us into all three counties and then we have an extra contract with them that gets us into Monterey, Carmel, Mountain View and the Simi Valley of Ventura County where Channel 3 wouldn't be there. So we see a lot of people, I know we see a lot of people at PCPA coming from those areas and we think that this advertising certainly doesn't hurt that ability. This just shows, the blue bar is the, when you're looking at what's the most important media for people who are coming to solving or that type of person that we're targeting, that the blue bars are there. And so if you have questions more about this in a minute, David's here to answer those questions because I've exhausted my knowledge on this. We work to create retail traffic. The chamber staff work with tour groups and big organizations to put together gift bags with, you know, coupons and tchotchkes and things like that to keep people in solving. We field 1,500 phone calls a month and 50 walk-ins per week. And, wait, this is not my slide deck. Is it? We'll see. We'll go with the analytics. So we have a very active presence on Instagram and on Facebook, which really helps locals interact with what's going on here in the community. The webpage, the Solving Chamber of Commerce, the Solving Chamber is part of the National Chamber Nation and that has some really great tools and analytics to support the tourism and business development in the area. So, yeah, so the number of member exposures we have is 1.7 million exposures and that's through a variety of ways. When you search for solving and businesses start to pop up in that Google search, it gets you there. So I'm going to ask staff real quick if it's possible, oh, where'd he go?
Is it possible that you could use this file? That has to go into that.
Which laptop? I apologize.
Small technical issue. We'll be with you in a moment.
This is what happens when you let me do things without staff support from the college.
It's a good thing we're not paid by the hour.
Do we have service units? Councilmember service units?
While they're doing that, Mr. Mayor Protem and Mr. Mayor, the previous meeting that came before us and asked for 250 roughly $1,000 and then you, Mayor Protem, said you were willing to cover the cost of the maps.
Correct.
But this is, we're back on the agenda at 250,000, right?
It appears that way. And I have a number of other questions about what was submitted to us in our agenda packet.
Okay.
And if you would pass those out, please.
This is like deja vu.
Take a look at that if you would, Councilmember Clark, and we'll pass one over.
Please, go ahead. There we go. There we go. Okay, so there's our, there's our member exposure slide and then we'll, so the city contract, so I wanted to show you a couple of things we're doing, the-
Can I stop you for just a second? You don't have a city contract.
No, you're correct, sir. So the proposed, the proposed services from the contract, okay?
For the contract that you don't have and you're not asking for.
Sorry, I, we, there was a contract that came through the board packet, correct?
No, not to my knowledge.
Not signed. There was a proposed contract. There was about $185,000 if you added up all the things that were in it. I've lost, we lost her.
Okay. There you go.
So I looked at the original contract, which was, I thought, part of the confusion. There was a proposed contract where the $50,000 was supported. So from that, I then went to what's the actual proposal that we were trying to do and to show you what those things were. So those proposed services to solving from the chamber were $246,000 and they included a variety of things, the commercial outreach that you saw, the maps that you've already funded, the business and relocation book. Out of all of these things, only $17,000 really were for chamber operations. So these are not, you know, these are not requests to support the chamber's operations. This is just, if the city wants to do these things, the chamber feels like that's a service we want to provide to the city and we can provide that in a solid manner to the city. So that, so that proposal shows that only 13% would go to chamber operations. And if you look at other chambers throughout the region, I'm also on the Santa Maria Chamber of Commerce Board. Of that $225,000 there, 70% of that go directly to chamber operations, not to, not to projects. They go directly to paying for the staff within the chamber. The other ones, I'm not a member of those, so I don't know how they work, but it's a fairly regular occurrence for cities to contract with their chambers to do business development and business promotion throughout the country and certainly throughout the coast. So this was the slide we showed you before and you've already seen that. And again, Dave can come up if you want. So this was the walk, shop and dine wine map. And Councilman Thomas, I misspoke earlier when I talked to you about what ends up in the tourist racks. It's the same one. There's 150,000 of these. You've already approved the printing of these maps. These get placed into the racks all across the state and the vendor who supplies those says that we're one of the top, says we're the top pulled item out of the deals and he's actually provided two extra spots for us at no extra charge. We do have the walking map. I was actually a member of the chamber when the walking map had a problem. It was offered by a private vendor out of Bakersfield and he was not being very friendly to the local businesses and we offered to take that over as a chamber. We also offered to take that in-house at the college of, at Allen Hancock College. We have a campus graphics operation that prints all kinds of stuff for San Diego High School District, Santa Maria Joint, Orket schools, all kinds of nonprofits throughout the area. So we put that together for the city and at a fairly minimal cost and then just pay the cost of the printing, so.
Dr. Walters, could I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
On the maps, you have the maps that you send out to other locations, Cambria and everywhere else to have them come here. Is that the same map as the, is that the same product or brochure that we're doing with the maps that go into the, go into our center here?
Yes, it is. They are the same. I misspoke earlier when I talked to you about that. So they are, they do fold up into a way that they fit in the tourist racks.
Doesn't it seem like something that we put outside of the county to get here that the actual location of the stores and everything, would that be that important? Wouldn't we have a less expensive product to put in those racks versus what we put in the center?
I'm sure we could, but you know, you're kind of getting a bulk discount on printing the 150,000 maps that go out, but there's, you know, certainly there's a different option for doing that. So for local, these do stay local. We've been doing Mandarin and Spanish maps to, we're reevaluating whether or not we're going to need the Mandarin maps this year because we're seeing fewer tourists there. But these are distributed in, only in solving restaurants, retail establishments. And then in the past, in 2019, we did the Business Relocation Guide. The city kicked in $30,000 for that and then it was on the, on the chamber to cover the rest of the costs of printing that through solving advertisements and Tracy did a really nice job of producing and distributing 10,000 copies. This is pretty much a core chamber partnership with cities and we think that's in that budget again, so we would like to continue to do that. We're doing Music in the Park and I think actually the city has already allocated money for the Music in the Park on Wednesday nights and you have hundreds of people coming to the park and it's certainly something that the people who are visiting enjoy very much. We do a lot of promotion of our tour groups. When they come into town, we set up different kinds of events for them so that they can make it for a great, a great experience so that when they come to town, they go back and tell their friends. And then we also produce maps for the solving beer and wine experience so that people can easily, you know, it takes the, kind of takes that bigger map and turns it into a, just if you want to do a wine walk or a beer walk or a beer and wine walk, you've got a map that can help you do that, so. And then I broke out some detail because this helped me understand what we were doing so that, and you guys can keep this thumb drive and share this with the council, please, but you know, these are the items that we're, that we're coming up with. So if, we believe all of these promote businesses and promote tourism and they're of value to the city and these are things that we've done in the past and would like to continue to do. Again, this is, there's not overhead coming back to the chamber for this. These are simply a fee-for-service kind of operation to make this happen. And I think, I mean, I hope you understand how much time, you know, when people call the Chamber of Commerce to find out information or to figure out where they can stay or where they can bring a group, we're helping with that. When events come up, the chamber is helping with those events as part of the service, so that's where we are on the contract and really it's up to the city as to if you want us to do this and continue to do that. And I understand that we've made it confusing and we're trying to unconfuse you and I told Jim earlier, I used to be legislative staff and I told people, you can get away with anything with a legislative body except for confusing them. And so hopefully we can have a conversation about the kinds of things we think are important to the community and that we can do for you and for our community. And you know, I consider solving part of our community. That's our service area, right? So I, and I can tell you, when I come to town, I see solving with a little different eye maybe than you do because I see it as a tourist and I see the people walking around with the maps in their hands and I see the people who have the beer and wine map and I see the people in the hotels who are asking the questions that the chamber is providing the answers for. So we believe it's a good investment and it's really up to the council as to if they would like us to continue to do this, we would be happy to do it. We think, we think it's a good service and we want to provide it. I don't, I don't want to, I want to make sure we're really clear. We want to provide these services because we think it makes our businesses better. And with that, that's, I think, you know, all of our board members. So for now, I'll leave them, oops, okay. I was going to leave, I was going to leave the budget up there, but, so I know you said you had questions and I can answer them to the best of my ability. Dave is right there and Tracy's here and Dan's here that can help answer those questions, so.
Questions of the staff report and the presentation.
I just like to thank you guys again for coming before us and helping to unconfuse us.
I'm not sure to ask this, but is there any duplication in what the chamber is asking for and what our new marketing firm, marketing firm is going to be doing?
So no, actually I talked to Tracy after you, you told me about that. I talked to Tracy and she showed me the contract for, is it Abbey? Abbey's the name of the company. And what they're doing is marketing to Las Vegas and Denver and places outside of our area. We're really marketing to that local group of people. You know, I'm adamant with this with our friends in Santa Maria and Orket. Why do you keep going to Pismo? Solving's that way, it's the same distance and it's a lot better. And there's, you know, it's just a nicer environment to be down here. So really, those KEY- So, so really those, those K E Y, and I'm, you know, Dave, you can believe me or don't. But you know, those ads work in Santa Maria. Those ads work in the five cities area. Those ads work for people to say, you know, I, I'm from Dallas and I, I just talked to a friend on the way down and he wanted me to tell him about the Six Four Museum. And I was like, you know, I didn't go to the Six Four Museum until I was getting ready to move from Dallas. Because it's there and I can go anytime I want and I never got around to it. And so we're trying to make sure that people in this area are saying, oh, man, I'm really lucky to live near Solvang. I should be going there once in a while. And I think you see it with the Christmas stuff. You see it with the, the music. We're trying to do that certainly with PCPA. We're, we're excited that tomorrow night, we're going to have the big ribbon cutting for PCPA. You know, we want, we want solving to be the destination for people on the coast to come here, to stay away from all the people in the Central Valley that's in Pismo. Nobody's watching the Central Valley.
Hi, guys. I'm David Hefferman, Marketing Specialist and Senior Account Executive with NPG California, Santa Barbara, K E Y T, Fox 11 Television, KKFX, N E Y T News Now and K C O Y, which is now known as O E Y T or CBS News Channel 12. You know, I've been asked to speak specifically to the question about duplication of services with your new agency of record, Abbey Marketing out of Nevada. And I want to compliment you on the selection of Abbey as your agency of record for your project named Tourism Marketing Managed Services. It's really important to know what you've bought and what the city of Solvang has invested in. And I want to compliment you on your, your choice and Abbey's strategy moving forward. But in terms of duplication of service, Abbey's plan targets are the drive markets of Southern California, the fly-in drive market of the Bay Area, and the secondary audiences they typify in your scope of work is non-stop flights from SBA, including Las Vegas, Denver and Phoenix. Nowhere in their scope of work do I see anything from Agora Hills to the South Bay of the Bay Area. I see the drive markets of Southern California. I see the fly-in drive market of the Bay Area and the secondary audiences markets. But I do not see anything in that large gap between Agora Hills and the South Bay of San Francisco. The plan that has been proposed, and I can only speak to the broadcast plan and the connected TV plan. So I'll, I'll be specific to that. But again, I want to compliment you on the choice of Abbey and their out-of-market plan for your tourism marketing managed services. But really most importantly, our, our broadcast plan, basically K E Y T, KKFX and N E Y T and the connected television plan. I should probably take a step back and ask the council members if they know what connected TV is. Are we familiar with OTT or connected TV?
No.
It's basically, we're advertising. We're advertising to streamers.
He wasn't in the Zoom meeting.
We're all, we're all in this boat together. Here we are. Anyway, it's advertising to streamers, people who watch television on the internet. Simple as that. It's no, you know, magic in the hat. It's a common way that people watch television now. But how do you hit it? The beauty of this platform and this technology is you can reach those people in their backyard, in any, in any market on the planet. Because if I have your IP address, I can serve you an ad. And in the media world, we're all just buying impressions now. It's just flat-out impressions. And Councilman Clark, I, I found it curious when you asked about the ROI question. When if I, for instance, take the figure that's been presented of $300,000, what is the ROI you expect back from your agency of record?
I can't answer that.
So just to give you a, for instance, if we assume that every shopper is spending $160 when they come to the city of Solvang, let's use a round figure. If I simply design, if I simply divide the $48,000 figure that you saw at the top of the budget breakout in the Chamber's breakout, and I simply divide $48,300 by 161, I end up with 300 shoppers that my return on investment to produce for the city of Solvang, my challenge as a marketer is to produce 301 shoppers spending $160 each. And that's a, that's a good gamble. That's a good bet. And so I, I just plead with the council to know what you're buying. And when you look at the investments that the Chamber is asking you to make, understand that the ROI is involved and you're looking at individual shoppers and the price that they may pay when they visit for two days or hopefully three days. So ideally, the K E Y T program, and I'll just simplify by saying that, in the connected TV program in Thousand Oaks and in the Carmel, Monterey, Salinas area reaching to the South Bay, will reach basically over 3 million TV households from Ventura to Salinas, including 500,000 local TV watchers, local ambassadors right here in the tri-counties. So I ask you, what's your return on investment? What are your expectations? Let us manage them. Let us look at them carefully. And the best of all marketing plans can be trimmed, can be refined, can be focused. And as we look at the Chamber's proposal, I would encourage you to do the same. And we can help you get the best return on investment. We can really refine what it's going to produce and what your goals are. And hopefully manage your return on investment in such a fashion that the residents of Solvang will get the bang for their buck. So again, congratulations on your choice of your agency of record for your tourism marketing managing services outside of this market. But again, I think you need to look at what you're going to do as the city of Solvang from Agora Hills to the South Bay of San Francisco and the Bay Area. So thanks again. And do you have any questions? I have a, I have a packet with basically the map areas that we're going to be covering in the broadcast and connected TV. It's two-sided. We apologize for that. I can actually email you the. So it'd be easier to look at.
That's the OTT thing, wasn't it?
Sorry?
Wasn't that, you should call OTT? You're supposed to transmit it?
OTT, yeah. Well, that's, that's one of the ways we can do it. But no, I, I can email you the, the packet and answer any questions you might have. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Anybody? Mayor? No? I have a bunch. Big surprise, huh?
I have comments, but no questions.
I have both. First, I'll start off by saying the Chamber does a hell of a job.
Agreed.
Tracy works constantly. She's, it's an amazing process. I've, I've helped her with distributing Christmas trees at Christmas time. These are things that the, the Chamber does that are just terrific. She does a great job. But that being said, we get an agenda item that is fraught with inconsistencies, errors and unexplained information. So for instance, under tourism on this particular slide, it shows visit SYV gets $485,000 a year. They do not. Not from the city. They get it from a T-bid account. So all the hoteliers pay that. We don't pay it. We collect it and hand it to them and we take 2% or 3%, whatever it is, as a processing charge. So I'm seeing numbers here that don't make sense. And it's still got that $600,000 tourism marketing number, which is, is, as we heard before, is incorrect. I, I look at two sheets of typewritten inconsistencies and problems that I saw in what was presented to us. What, what you presented was different. You corrected it. You said there were some problems. Oh, yeah, there's a lot of problems with this. I don't like the fact that it, it comes in here and it says, well, gee, Long Polk gives their Chamber of Commerce, what, $300,000? But you take a look at it on a per capita basis and that's about $3 a person. A little bit more. I got 130,000, which what was given to us, it was a different number than you got. $3 a person. We've got 6,000 people. If we gave you 100,000, that's $16 a person. So comparison of one city to another on the budgeting numbers don't work for me. Flat-out don't work. We were told that you did 50,000 maps and we should pay for that. And we agreed and gave you the $50,000 to pay for those maps. Now I'm hearing it isn't 50,000 maps. It's 30,000 maps.
No, no, it's 150,000 maps.
Maps?
The, the walking maps?
Yeah.
Isn't that correct, Tracy?
Yes.
Yeah, it's 150,000 maps.
Oh, that's funny. That's not what it says in our presentation. I don't think it said that in yours either. You had 30,000, then you had some Mandarin, then you had some Spanish stuff. It, it didn't even come up to 50,000. So I don't, I don't know where the numbers are coming from. Did you guys put out an annual report? I've never seen an annual report. I do not know what the funding sources are for the Chamber. You got about 700 members, I believe, average couple hundred bucks a piece per year. So I know there's some amount of money coming in. There's sponsors for all of these events that you do. How much do they pay? How much are we supposed to pay? I can't tell you that I have any comfort in what I'm seeing in this proposal. None. I love the Chamber. They do a great job. But, but this that we got presented with doesn't work. Even your corrected version to me seems a bit off. You made the statement right off the bat, the contract. You don't have a contract. You never had a contract. So if you want a contract, we need to talk about this in a different way. I need to see to be comfortable personally. I'm only one of five, granted. But I need to see what it is you want to do. I got a great difference between what our marketing, new marketing contract people, Abbey, will do and what you have in mind with the local stuff. But you folks decided what to do and you went off and did it. Now you're coming to us and you want the money for it.
No, sir, that's not the case, sir.
Wait, wait, wait. You didn't do the TV commercials?
That's how much we will do. That's what we've done in the past.
And, and now you're asking for us for that to be paid for?
No, no, sir. I think we're, the, the items that were listed on that last slide with the budget.
Yeah.
None of that, if, if we don't get funds for that, none of it happens. And I, and I think the difference, the difference in comparing what happened, you know, when we compared to other cities, the point there, and I wasn't clear enough on that, is those cities are paying for operations of their chambers. We're not asking for operational funds for the Chamber. We are doing things that the city originally asked us to do, albeit under a different council. But these are things the city asked us to do and we went out and did them and we think we provided a better value for, for doing that. Certainly, I mean, the maps are a great example of value added to the city. The map is, is actually readable. The map is useful for the businesses. The map is updated. So it.
I love the maps.
And I, I get it. I, I get your frustration with being confused. Tracy heard my frustration about being confused today as well. And I apologize for, I, I looked at two documents. I looked at a contract that was in your packet, I believe. And that's when I said the, that, that was what was in the contract. And it did not match the presentation. You're right. That's why I tried to tie out our presentation today for you. So those items that are listed on, on the, on the sheet, I don't know if we can put that back up or not? It's still here if you just turn it back on.
Last minute, yeah.
Yeah. So, so those things, those things that are there, if, if you don't want us to order more Go Green shopping bags that say solving on them to put in the hotels, then, then we won't order them. If, if you don't want jazz in the park, then we won't do it. That's, yeah, if you don't want the relocation book, we won't, we won't do it. That's, that's.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So when you mentioned the Go Green shopping bags that you put in the hotels, that's something that the Chamber did on their own? And was, was that money requested before? Hey, we want to do the Go Green shopping bags. Let's, can we have $10,000 or we do it and then we come back and ask us for money?
No, we're asking in advance for that. So we, we did it already. We did that once. Those were all paid for. I think they're all gone, right, Tracy?
Yes.
Yeah, they're all gone. So if you want, if, if, if we want to have those in the hotels so people take home a bag that says solving.
All of this is future stuff?
All of this is future stuff, except for, except for the maps that you already paid for.
Understood.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Turn around, look at himself. It's gone.
There you go.
There you go.
You can see it behind you too. This is not.
No, it's not.
But I'm going to leave you the thumb drive and we can share it with you, so.
Okay, this is, this is way above my pay grade because if, if we're going to make a blanket, yes, here's all this money because we're going to do all this. I'm financially exhausted, everybody. I'm financially exhausted because everybody that comes before this council is the panacea to, to every need we have. And, and I would rather pay for things in advance like this. But this takes a workshop, not, not tonight to say, okay, here's $250,000.
No way.
Go nuts. I, I, I'm spent, not monetarily, although it's getting very expensive telling people no and then giving them checks. But I just, I would rather look at specifics, item by item. Hey, we want to do this. Are you willing to pony up three, you know, $16,000? Yes, because it puts heads in beds. But the blanket stuff I can't deal with. I, I'm.
I think that's fair.
We're heading into, I, I spent five years on the floor of the New York Stock Exchange, the American Stock Exchange. I was there the day of the crash of '87. Anybody who thinks that this is not going to be happening again, we're headed towards really, really, really rough times. And I know that tourism is our lifeblood. But we're in uncharted territory and we don't have the money for every great group. And of course, the Chamber is an excellent organization and it's also member-driven. But when, when, when you want to put on an event, I want to pay for it. If it puts heads in beds and it brings the taxpayers, $400,000, $300,000 more in, in sheriff's costs is what we're absorbing. Water rates, sewer rates. It's, it's like, I, I feel like I'm a punching bag trying to represent the taxpayers of Solvang. So I would rather look over these things specifically and say, yes, great idea. This thing I think really works. But that's where I'm at right now. Just do the blanket. I can't do it.
I, I think that's fair. And I don't think any of us had any expectation that you'd be like, yep, let's go forward with this tonight. Because it takes a while to unconfuse a legislative body. Because you have plenty, you've got a real job to do. I get it. I get it. You've got a real job.
You know me better than I thought you did.
No, I, I.
Unconfuse me is a good point.
And, and, and what was originally given to us.
I, I understand. And we've had that conversation internally. I totally get it. And I think there, there was a, a good faith effort on the part of our staff and of our board members to try to be comprehensive. And this is not the format to be comprehensive. This is the format to be concise. And if you want to talk about details of what the Lodging and Dining Guide does for $1,200, that's for another time. But we want to be able to, I, I get it. I get your frustration and, and it's, it's perfectly understandable. But I hope you also will think two things. One, when the recession comes, we want people to think solving before they think Pismo. And I can tell you what happened at the college before I got there in the last recession. They had a recession and they needed to cut back and they pulled all their counselors out of the high schools. Well, we, you know, we, we can barely serve the students we have. And when we came out of the recession, you know what happened? High school kids didn't know who we were. Our community had lost us because we weren't there telling them. And we spent 2013, 14, 15, just getting into our high schools again and getting our students back. And we've gone from getting 35% of our local high school graduates to now we get 55% of our local high school graduates. And if the recession comes, Mr. Clark, and I don't doubt that it will, we're going to still be in the high schools. We're still going to be a San Diego High School. We're going to be there because those students are going to need us and we'll just figure out how to make it work. So I, we, we want to be part of solving and we want to help. We, we want to help solving, get local people to think, hey, instead of driving to Hollywood, I'll come to solving. And if things turn south, we want them to say, hey, I've got a great resource for people literally from all over the world. I yelled this at my kid a couple of months ago. We took him to Pismo and he didn't want to go. I'm like, I shouldn't say that. I just said that. But we were, we, we had some business up there. And I'm like, millions of people come to visit this, this area and you live, it's right here in your backyard. And we, we feel the same with solving. But it's, we, we hope that you'll allow us to help you and we, we're happy to come back with a more concise presentation or meet with you individually, if you would like to do that, to walk through what we should be doing.
We, we can't meet individually. We have to do this in public.
As long, as long as you don't talk to each other, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's the. That's, that's the spokes.
Yeah. Actually, I guess we could.
Yeah.
But it, it's more important that it be presented to us in the public so that
Yeah, we don't want to do anything behind, we just, we want to make sure everybody understands it. And, and I get it. I mean, it's, you know, here it is 8:30 and, and bless you guys. Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, totally. We've got a lot to go yet.
So we appreciate that, so. Anyway, that's my part.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, just, I'm trying to determine, because it's very blurry on the, the Zoom screen. So I'm trying to determine if the numbers that you guys were looking at, that kind of that itemized green background, if it's the same as what's on our agenda, page 702, attachment fee.
Yeah, probably not.
No, it, it's, it's not at all, Charlie, Mr. Mayor. It, that's the whole thing. It was a complete redo. No, doesn't match.
So, well, I'll, I'll say thank you and I'll also say thank you on behalf of the college. We're actually going to have our board meeting here tonight so that we can go attend the ribbon cutting or tomorrow night, so we'll be
I was going to say if you can do it tonight, it's going to be really late.
We'll be done by 6:30, so.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other final comments before we go out for public comment? No? Any public comment? And in the room, nobody? Anybody on Zoom? Do you want to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come, come up. State your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name's Suzie Sorenson. I actually wasn't going to speak, but since I am a business owner, I'm also on the chamber board. And I also live in Lompoc. So when you were saying about every dollar from the chamber there, first of all, that's not a tourist town. No dollars go to anything there. And I'm not even a chamber member there anymore because of that. They don't do anything.
But it was presented to us as a point of comparison.
So they were just telling you, I think, we're using it as a comparison of what other chambers receive.
Yep.
And our chamber isn't. Most of the money that we get is not going towards, to supply the office. Like, it's mostly for events. And Solving is a tourist town. I mean, we've been in business here since 1966. And we do want visitors to come here. And it is about getting the local people that are from San Luis, Santa Barbara. I work in the business six days a week. And I can tell you that a lot more people have been coming to this area locally from Santa Barbara, Santa Clarita, San Luis. I ask every single person every day, that's why I was late, because we have a cheese shop. So I ask them, where do you come from? What, how have you been here? Oh, I haven't been here in 30 years, 20 years. People are coming back to Solving and they have been with the COVID. Solving is known like to, to prosper in good times and in down times because we're close proximity to LA, Orange County. People can get here when they can't afford to fly. So Solving, it is important that we let people know and remind people that we are here. Because Solving is different than it was 20, 30 years ago. It's today, it's like a safe place. People feel comfortable from coming here. COVID, everything, we, we've been busy because people have felt good about coming here. They feel safe, they can spend money. And $160 is on the low side for what people spend here. Back to the cost of advertising for TV commercials because people will come and spend $100 just in my store. And I'm just a little tiny store. And they come from Santa Maria just to get cheese and stuff because they don't have access to that kind of a quality in Santa Maria.
Wow.
So I think that we have to look at the dollars that we're bringing here from advertising are working. Do you maybe need to get rid of some of this stuff? The green bags, whatever wall we're thinking that we're going into recession? I do agree, things are going to change. People are already changing how they're spending. But the people here that live here, we always look at it, oh, the money goes to the tourists and it doesn't go to us that live here. But you know what? You wouldn't want to live here if we didn't have a town here. If we didn't supply restaurants, shops, and a beautiful city, you wouldn't choose to be here. That's why people want to live here. That's why it's a high-priced real estate market. I also have a real estate license. So people want to move here because it's safe, it's clean. It has a great community that, community support and places for people to go. And restaurants that are not closed if you go down to Santa Barbara and walk State Street a little bit. It's a lot different. We're the most normal place in all of, between LA and San Luis. I've traveled all of them. I'm going to San Luis again on Thursday. I mean, people don't realize how lucky we really are in this city to live here besides all the people that come here to visit. And I do attribute that to the chamber. The chamber has helped a lot of us, small businesses, to figure out the PPP money, the ERCT credits. That's why a lot of us are still in business here. Because they have reached out to help us.
Absolutely.
So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody on Zoom wish to speak? Okay. So we'll bring it back to the council for last comments or motions.
Mr. Mayor Protem, could I just chime in for a moment?
Absolutely.
If the council's inclined to do anything with a form of contract, I would recommend that you refer to the fact of staff negotiation. Um, I understood the contract form was as a proposal without direction from the council. I would not recommend in any way approving a form of contract as it is because I've neither had an opportunity to negotiate the terms with the chamber or otherwise get to the field for it somehow.
Thank you very much. I would agree completely. I do not, I wasn't going to move or second or vote on anything tonight except that we should have a more, a bigger meeting on this subject. As Councilman Clark said, we need to look at some of the details. We need to go through this. There's some great ideas in here, I agree. But the way it's been presented at this point, I personally can't support.
This, this would take an entire meeting to really sit down as a meeting slash workshop and say what's important and what's not.
And that, I think that was one of the suggestions as we meet.
That's what I wish that, that's what I wish that we could do.
Can, can we do that?
We're the city council, we can do anything.
With some limitations.
Well, we don't have too many things on the next meeting.
That reminds me of a proverb, and this sums up my, my experience on this council. It's a Turkish proverb of all things. But when a clown enters the palace, he doesn't become king, it makes the palace a circus. That's my, that's my motto.
I like that.
Would we be able to have this be on the next agenda? Because we don't have a lot. I mean, we do have some things on there. Most, most of it is consent agenda items.
I, I think the attorney has something to say on that.
Well, council, what I was going to suggest is rather than putting it on the agenda and trying to negotiate a contract with council, either appoint a subcommittee of two council members to sit down and pencil out exactly what the tasks are going to be expected of the chamber and then try to negotiate an actual contract to bring back forward the city council as a whole. Because as, as has been shown just from the number of issues that are being raised in the contract tonight, it's going to be a very long meeting to try and negotiate the policy issues as well as the contract language in an open session. And I think it's going to be difficult for the council as a whole to do that, whether it's on July 25th or not. And I also want to point out to the council that my partner, Craig Steele, will be present at the meeting on the 25th. So if there's an issue that's coming up, I'm going to need to fully brief him on any of the issues that are going to be related to contract negotiation. So my recommendation in this situation is to take two of the council members to get together to meet with the chamber and see if they can't hash out exactly what functions the city's going to need from the chamber. And then direct staff to try to come up with a contract that will memorialize those and bring it back to council sometime in August or September.
That sounds perfect.
It does sound good. And you sound like a perfect person to do that.
Nope.
That response was way too quick. What I would like to suggest, and I'll ask for the other council members.
You do more homework than I do.
Well, I, I will ask the other council. I think, following on with the attorney's recommendation though, I think maybe what we need to see is a, 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 a formal request for the scope of work from this chamber. Something written out with the details. So that we have something that a couple of us can talk about and not just use abstract terms. I, 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 I'm not good at abstract. I need details. So all of the individual items that, that the, the chamber would like to have funded and, and has a support for, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see it with an annual report. I want to see how things are going. So if I can get that into staff and then staff can, at that point in time, bring it to us and we'll go to the, we'll, we'll take a couple of people and go off and have a conversation. Yes, no, reasonable?
Well, I think you ought to keep this specific to this. And have two people meet with them and, and go over their requests. You know, and I've, I've talked to some of the people that are here. And I've gotten different requests, you know, almost each time. And, and for me, that's kind of confusing. So I, I really would like to have somebody sit down and, and come up with something that, that's feasible. The chamber needs, needs to be here. They need to help us, you know, help us run our city. There's absolutely no doubt about that.
Agreed.
I tend to think that this particular package is a little bit, a little bit higher than, you know, I ever considered or thought. But I think we just need to sit down and go over and go through some of these things. Like I say, I've got like three or four different sheets.
Yeah.
And they don't all agree. And I think that's probably because trying to get caught up for tonight because of the meeting tonight. So it'd be better to, to put this together with, with a couple of our people and some of their people and then come back and do a presentation to the council for a vote.
I would agree. Can we get the chamber to say they will do that? Put together a complete package? When you have that, present that to the city manager and, and we'll bring it to the council. We'll pick a couple of people, sit down and discuss all of those items.
Council, I'd, I'd recommend that you appoint those two people now, if time is of the essence. So if there are two council members that are contributing, then once that matter once that matter, once that matter comes into the council, then, uh, to the council subcommittee, then you'll have the ability to turn quickly and start negotiating on that rather than waiting an additional meeting.
Okay. Can I assign two people and just at my whim? Being Mayor Protem at this point?
Well, the mayor can.
You could, or we could, we could just volunteer to do an idea for doing that.
I'd be willing to sit down with Charlie on that.
Okay. So the two council members are the mayor, Urrig, and council member Thomas.
Thank you, council member Thomas.
Appreciate that, gentlemen. So as soon as we've got something completely in detail, then these gentlemen can get with you and then present it to us as a council. Thank you very much. At this point then, I think we're done with this one? Okay, let's move on to number, item number nine. City report, staff report, please.
May I read the title?
Please read number nine, I apologize.
Resolution number 221187, parking in luffy waiver request for high roller tiki lounge at 40, at 433 Alisal Road. Approve the waiver of a parking in luffy for one parking space in accordance with planning commission recommendations.
Staff report, please.
Council, this item is in front of you because per council code, per the city code, the city council is the body that will have the authority to waive a parking fee if we desire to do so. The resolution states all the whereas as to why staff feels that this will be up here considered. Staff also took this item and particulars of the challenges of the tiki lounge of essentially trying to change their proportion of their leased space, trying to go from retail to a wine bar second, which is higher density and higher intensive use, which requires additional parking to be provided under the city code. So that's how that issue came up. We have been working with staff and the planning commission to come up with solutions for the space to be usable. And the planning commission doesn't actually have the authority to waive a parking fee, but we did take it to them for their general review. And they were able to come up with recommendations to resolve most of the matters with this space and change of use except for the one parking. So it's in front of you today to consider whether or not you will be willing to waive one parking space or a parking in lieu, which is $1,000. And we also have our planning consultant, Lori Tomora, who is here to provide with any additional details of the protocol.
Thank you. Do you have any questions of the staff report?
No.
I do have a question. When did this project first start going through review?
Project?
Yeah. Yeah, not, not specifically the, the request, but when the, the tiki, the tiki lounge as an expansion start being reviewed?
We were, this is Lori Tomora, the planning consultant. We were beginning to start the process, I believe about eight months ago, maybe more. The expansion of, of the tiki lounge into the patio area and then into the retail spaces across the patio or courtyard area raised a number of issues for the building code and parking. The, the main issue was the change of use from retail to a bar raised concerns about how many bathrooms were available in the lower area. So, and some other building code issues. So for the, a number of months, there was a lot of discussion about how to allow the expansion of uses into these other areas, the change of use from a standard retail to a bar with higher occupancy and how they could allocate that expanded use based on the number of bathrooms that were in that first floor area of the building. Secondarily, the issue of parking is, was a concern because there's only the, the existing parking in the back of the building and changing the use from retail at 500 square feet per, you know, retail space versus 300 square feet per parking space left us with a discrepancy in the amount of parking that was available on site. Based on the parking code, the city does allow for courtyard areas to have a reduction in parking for, based on the two parking spaces. So their little courtyard area was able to have a staff waiver. The, but the retail, that area that's being converted to the bar area, there's two requirements. One is two parking spaces. They would need to look for offsite parking and then one parking space for a waiver. That was the, the review from the planning commission and that's what's being brought forward to you tonight.
Okay, so my question next is, this project was started to get reviewed eight months ago. When was, when was the applicant made aware that he was going to have to provide these fees if he wasn't able to accommodate parking in the development?
From the very beginning, we talked to him about what the code requires and what the process would be. We, we pointed out that, you know, this building was originally approved, actually built before the city incorporated. And, you know, the, the, it was a retail establishment. And changing to a bar changes the dynamics of the building. This is a problem, you know, a challenge throughout the city when we have these changes of use. And between the bathroom issue and the parking issue, we've had ongoing discussions with the owner since the beginning.
Okay, I just want to, I, I just want to find out if that's what's going on. If it was from the very beginning that the applicant was made aware that these were all the changes and all the accommodations that were going to have to happen. So then the and all the accommodations that were going to have to happen. So then the applicant would be able to wait, whether it's worth the investment or not.
Correct.
And the bathroom thing has been resolved?
Did he have worked out an arrangement with the building department? Yes?
Excellent. Any other comments?
I don't know if the applicant wants to make any comments, but I'd be interested in hearing them.
Yeah, we heard him present before, and he made a compelling statement, and the planning commission heard him as well.
Good evening, Mayor Yurig and council members. Real quick, I was not made aware early on of a lot of these details. It's been, you know, really hard to get information out of anyone. This whole project, it started over a year ago. It got to ABC first, took three or four months before they looked at it, threw it back to me and the city for the usage. So we're going way back. When I finally got to the city and we started going through, we were handed correction after correction, and I can honestly say 99% of them were, I don't know if bogus is the right word, but they were incorrect. And my plan guy threw everyone back and said, no, this is not, this is not correct. The numbers you sent me, you sent me two different numbers. I mean, it was, it was just so many errors that he was finding, and every one of them was resolved. The bathroom was another one that, you know, the numbers weren't correct, and we had plenty of bathroom space. It was, it was resolved. And then all of a sudden, out of nowhere, came parking. And it's, this is where we're at now. And it's, and it's been months and months and months of waiting, wait and see, wait and see. I mean, I went to the planning commission over a month ago, longer than that. And to get on the agenda, it took that long. I don't understand why. I'm here to discuss the request for the waiver. I'm here to request a full waiver, not just for one spot. You know, it was brought to my attention that, per the code, I shouldn't even have to go to the planning commission, technically, for a recommendation to you. It should have just came right to you. I mean, it's just all a waste of time, in my opinion. And we are, you know, paying fees and rent and all this other stuff, and we shouldn't have to incur all these hurry-up-and-wait things. And, you know, this project's been ongoing for over a year, has been fraught by delays, poor communication from the city planning departments. I paid months of rent, done improvements, paid for ABC licensing, fire, city fees, plan fees, all while experiencing correction after correction, and now standstill with parking. I can't afford to pay the parking fee. The list is long, but includes Solving Barco, Succulent Cafe, and others who are not made to pay parking fees. The businesses with the most money have been relieved of this in lieu of Inlu Fy, and the smallest businesses are being asked to contribute to the city's account. Perceived parking issues shouldn't be a burden directed towards small business owner, rather than, they should be assessed to tourists via parking meters, which I brought up at the last public comment. Some businesses like mine fought through COVID without using PPP monies, took out personal loans to get by. We actually moved, so incurred that extra expense, and now we're being asked to pay extravagant fees for parking spaces that don't even exist. There's precedents involved here, fairness and consistency issues, and plenty of non-compliant buildings in the town. Furthermore, I wrote a letter requesting a full waiver, and the agenda reflected only one spot to be considered. It was related to me to the planning commission recommendation was all that would be considered. From what I understand, the code doesn't even require this to go to the planning commission, rather straight to the city, as I discussed. Not having the full waiver request on the agenda only incurs further delays. Understaffing, poor staffing, and incorrect staffing have been given as reasons for the lack of communication and outright nonresponsiveness. I've waited weeks for call back or email back from city employees such as Lori Tamar, Zina Bradford, and others. The only bright spot has been Sofia Chica, who although is new to the team, has stepped up to explain and assist in recent months. Not one person has ever offered any assistance at all getting this wrapped up. Many, many visitors and customers of mine have asked why the city seems to not want businesses to succeed. What am I, what I'm asking for is simple, and it's only for a few nights per week. The other occupants of my building are rarely here and certainly not after 5:00 PM or weekends. The post office across the street is also closed during those hours and days. Plenty of parking available over there. If this truly is about parking, I can show that my business is not affecting it in any way. We are located at the end of town, and plenty of street parking exists during these hours, most hours. There's a large lot across the street as well, and I have plenty of pictures showing available parking at these hours. We should be working as a team. Small businesses bring revenue and traffic to the city. Each business's marketing is a positive thing for all. When we hashtag, hashtag visit solving and create events and buzz, it helps bring traffic and revenue to hotel, restaurants, et cetera. Sorry, I had to put some of my thoughts down on paper because it's a lot, and it's more than that. This has been a ridiculously long project. I've stated before, yes, I was not aware that there was going to be this big of an issue with the change of use. That was my ignorance, but I was willing to work through it all, given the information. But I couldn't get any information. And my plan guy, who's been doing this forever, from San Luis Obispo to Santa Barbara, he said the ineptness is just beyond what he's seen before. And, you know, and I understand you have some outside contractors that are checking plans and things like that, but, you know, in this case, it just wasn't done correctly. And, you know, I'm a newcomer. I've had a business in this town for over a dozen years, but I've never had to do this lengthy of a process. And all I asked ever was somebody to say, hey, let me help you. Let me help you get the business open. Let's figure this out. Let's work through it if it's going to be such a complicated process. And, you know, $70,000 to be asked for a small business owner during this time is, it's more than I can do. I mean, I'd be forced to not open the business, lose all the rent that I paid over a year and a half of rent, lose all the ABC fees. I'm not going to get those back, whether I go forward or not, lose, you know, the fire fee and all the other stuff, the plan guy that charged me. I mean, everything. And I, you know, it's just, it's a game changer. And so that's why I'm here. I'm requesting a full waiver. I don't know if you can actually vote on a full waiver tonight or not, or if you're even inclined to. But I think bringing one spot to the council tonight is, quite frankly, a joke after all this time. And, you know, I wanted to email today and ask, you know, why is this not being changed? And, you know, I asked Sofia, and she, she said that's what the city manager said. So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
And appreciate your time today. Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Cobb. So when were you aware that the parking was going to be an issue in the process?
Not until just recently.
Not until just recently?
Pretty recent, maybe four months ago.
Okay. Would you have gone through this whole issue if you had known that it was going to take as long and it was going to cost as much?
Honestly, I don't think I would have done this, this project at all, knowing that all of these, all these issues are going to come. You know, I thought, I felt I did my due diligence. I talked to my compliance officer, you know. I talked to people, and I said, you know, what's involved here? Oh, just diagram out the area, send it to the ABC. You know, that was basically what I was told. It should be as simple as what you did for your patio. Was not that, obviously. That was not the case. So, yeah, in the beginning, I wasn't given all the information. Not my fault, not anybody else's fault either, I guess. But, no, I don't, I don't know if I would have. But here I am. It's catch 22 at this point. I'm in a lease. I've been paying rent. I'd have to put the place back to where it was. I'd have to risk losing part of my patio if somebody moves into that space. My patio is part of my revenue. I was just taking away two spots on the street because, you know, it was resolved that everybody needed to take those. They weren't harming anybody. That's a wide sidewalk there. It's the end of town, literally the end of the street. And I lost two tables. And, you know, that hurts. And now, if I lose part of my patio, again, another game changer. So, you know, it's, having that building, that space next to me is also a defensive mode move for that patio. And what I need, I need the patio to survive. We don't have a whole lot of seating inside, and it is what it is, you know?
Thank you.
You had a space on Copenhagen prior to this one, right?
I did, for a dozen years or so.
Yeah, sort this out, sellers?
Yeah.
And before you took that space over, it was, I believe, a spa, right?
It was.
Did you have to provide additional parking at that time? Because that is a change of use, right?
You are correct.
It's going from a retail to an eating and drinking place.
That's correct. No, I didn't have to do anything. I wasn't required to do anything. So there's a lot of inconsistencies, yes. And, you know, and there's a lot of noncompliance in town. Not anybody's fault necessarily. But, you know, as was discussed at the planning commission meeting, some of these things go back to the 60s or 70s or 80s, and they can't even figure out who paid what or what was paid in. And, you know, also, I just wanted to state, I'm also, whatever happens here tonight, I'm willing to team up with somebody to tackle the parking situation in town, if it is a situation. But I think strongly that we need to have paid parking for tourists, and it's not at a big expense to the city. You can easily put a few signs up with codes. These apps are very inexpensive now. Every city has them. You mark the streets, you hit a code, and you pay on your phone. And it wouldn't be a big cost, and it would be a lot of money for the city. And people expect, tourists expect to pay for parking in cities. So I'm willing to team up with somebody on that. Because I, going through this process, I feel strongly about this burden that's trying to be placed on small business owners for perceived parking, imaginary parking spots.
The third rail of solving.
There you go.
A parking.
Any other comments?
Well, this is apples and oranges. My comment is because we're talking about what this gentleman is asking for is not what's on the agenda. We're being asked to vote on one parking space tonight.
And I'd have to go back to the attorney and ask if it's...
Well, there's nothing, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Nothing we can do. We can only discuss what, and vote on what is on the agenda tonight. We can't change that.
That's my point. Now, you know, how do I get it on the, you know, I asked for it to be on the agenda. I asked. It was denied by the city manager.
Because I'm in...
Mr. Mayor, could I chime in here?
Yes, please.
Mr. Cobb was informed of the parking issues probably back in January, if I remember correctly. It may have been before that. I don't know what has happened since that point, other than the fact that the council is the only body that has the ability to waive the Inlu parking fees. That's why it's before you tonight. The request is a recommendation from the planning commission to go ahead and waive one parking space. We can't cure everything that has occurred with this particular project with respect to the plan check issues, perhaps the change of use and so on. The matter that's before you tonight, and the matter that the council should be only looking at...
Correct.
Is the planning commission's recommendation to waive one parking space and the Inlu parking fee. Certainly, council can refer it back to staff for additional work on it, but it doesn't sound like Mr. Cobb is interested in doing that. So I would recommend that the council go ahead and focus on the issue that is before tonight, which is the recommendation to approve the waiver of one parking space and the findings that are set forth in the resolution.
Yeah. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
We can't discuss other requests. And I drive by...
And I'm interested in doing it. I never said I was not interested in doing it.
Understood.
I don't understand why, this is the attorney, I don't understand why it wasn't put on here. That's the point. I'm interested in, if it takes another month, it takes another month.
Yeah. But we're myopic here. We have to be, because this is what's in front of us.
Yes, I don't want to waste any more time.
And my comment is, I drive by three, 30, not four or five times a day, because I live in that neighborhood, and 99% of his traffic is foot traffic. So I, the minute I saw this, I wanted to, I'm like, oh, good, I want to help out. I like helping out small businesses. I want to waive the Inlu parking fee. And that's my opinion on this. I didn't know we had the other issue until I started reading the binder. So that's my opinion.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so my next question is to staff. What needs to happen for Mr. Cobb to be able to ask for all of the Inlu parking fees to be waived, just like other businesses in town have been able to do?
Well, primarily, counsel, you're going to have to make a finding under the municipal code that was set forth in the resolution with respect to the one parking space. And specifically, I'll see if I can find the language to provide that to you, but essentially, you have to make a specific finding that the amount of the fee is wholly unrelated, that there's an absence of a reasonable relationship or nexus between the parking impacts of the development and either the amount of the fee charged or the type of parking facilities to be financed. That latter one is not really relevant, because the city's not talking about financing parking improvements. But you're going to have to make a finding that there is no reasonable relationship between the parking impacts of the development and the amount of the fee. So you would basically have to come to a conclusion that there are no parking impacts at all from this project, the change in use, to come up with a waiver of all the fees. Staff found that there is some impacts to it based on the nature of the code. There is a conversion of use here, and there is going to be additional traffic. Maybe apocryphally, there will be the foot traffic coming up. Ultimately, staff has to make a determination based on the language of the code as to what can be approved. And that's why this recommendation came through the planning commission to you, because staff doesn't see this as a situation where there are zero parking impacts. And that's why this is a happy medium. It may not be the entire thing that the applicant is looking for, but it is certainly something that's supported by the code, and it provides him some of the relief that he's looking for.
Okay, so we can, we can tell him that we don't, we can avoid, what do you call it, get rid of the fee for the one space. But we have to go back to staff and have them reevaluate and present to us again for the remainder of the parking requirements?
Well, I believe that you have the power to waive all the fees, counsel, if you so decide. But you need to make that finding that there is no reasonable relationship between the parking impacts of the development and the amount of the fee. So in other words, there's no parking impacts at all, and you can say there's no fee that's required. If you can't make that finding, then you're going to have a difficult time having that decision sustained in this challenge.
Well, my understanding is that there is public parking right across the street.
There's right in front of his place.
Yes, right in front of his place. And that parking is mostly empty on those evenings when the tiki lounge is doing business, which is mostly Saturday and Sunday evenings. So...
Also, it was stated, I'm trying to put a bar in there, and I'm not. I'm just trying to put additional seating. There's no plumbing. There's going to be no preparation of anything. It's just a few seats. That's all we're asking for.
Tables and chairs.
Tables and chairs.
Mr. Mayor Protam, the applicant has had an opportunity to do this. This is in a staff discussion at this point. If there are questions available, then we can go ahead and answer those. But at this point, from my understanding, is what council is looking for direction on what they could do.
Right. So thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. That's a heck of a finding to try and make, Dave. I understand the concern. Comments?
I want to vote on what's in front of us.
Okay.
Is my comment.
Okay. First, let's go to public comment. I do have a speaker slip for Tracy Beard on this subject.
Tracy Beard, the Solving Chamber. The chamber is really in favor of letting these parking fees, you know, be halted. This has to stop at some point. We are selling parking spaces we don't have, and we have to make a change. It is time, we are 2022, and it's time to make a change in how we do parking with our businesses, because we've waived a lot of parking, other councils have waived parking, and it's just time to bring it up to 2022. And this is not fair to businesses that want to come. We're haltering businesses that are coming to this town. So I just ask you to make a wave for him and for this organization. And he is not a chamber member, but he's a very good standing business owner, and I do want to say that. And I'm not here because we come for all business. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Any other public comment? Anybody on Zoom want to talk? No? Okay. Bringing it back to the council, then. Last comments or a motion?
That Inlu thing's got to be turned upside down. Why don't I just charge somebody $12,000 to open a store? I mean, to add it to the business instead of calling it Inlu parking, because we don't have any parking.
Well, as I understand, the Inlu parking was basically, we can't put any parking in the location, but we're going to collect money for that so that we could do that. That's how we bought Parking Lot 5.
I understood.
It was a funding procedure. I don't know that it's valid anymore. I think Ms. Beard makes a good comment that maybe we need to update that. And that's why I had asked at the prior meeting to... to have the in lieu parking process brought before the council for discussion. And I believe it is on a future, it's on the future agenda. So I'm still looking for a motion.
Well, it is within the power of the council to waive the in lieu parking fees. I do find that it's on an area that it's empty. He is only adding twenty seating spots. There is public parking across the street. So if we can waive the, and I mean we as the council in general, because none of, because we didn't, most of us didn't vote on this. But if it was found that other businesses are able to remove parking to develop a patio that seat far more people for far longer, I don't see why we can't find that this is not going to make an impact. And certainly, I don't see why we should charge plus of $60,000 when it specifies on the code that this is for building parking when we don't have a project to build parking in that area of the town.
So, do you want to make a motion?
I want to make a motion to waive the in lieu parking fees and to direct staff to, you know, do a full study on what it is that we are charging for businesses whenever we charge them for the in lieu parking fees, so that moving forward, you know, these can be more fair.
Well, the in lieu parking fees are on a future agenda.
Right.
That process is on a future agenda. So what's before us this evening, I believe, is what we're going to do for this gentleman's business as far as his parking fees. So we have, as Councilmember Clark put it, one thing on the agenda tonight. We can follow up on the planning commission's recommendation that we give him a waiver on the one parking fee, which was, what, $12,000, I believe? The other part of it was, as the attorney said, we have to make a finding that it's not, I don't, I didn't get all of his words, but it's it's not a reasonable to put those parking fees across there. It doesn't relate to his business.
The language is, this is in Section 1119D in the municipal code. An electing developer may apply to the city council for reducing or adjustment to for a waiver of the in lieu parking fee based on the absence of any reasonable relationship or nexus between the parking impacts of the development and the amount of the fee charged. That's the finding that you would need to make to eliminate one or all of the in lieu fees.
And we can eliminate all of the fees this evening, even though only one of them has been presented to us.
Well, that's the recommendation that came from the planning commission. You have the power as the council, because the agenda item is regarding the parking in lieu fee waiver request for $61,880. That is the request that the applicant made.
Okay.
The planning commission gave you a recommendation, but you would need to make that finding as to one or as to all of the waivers if you choose to do that.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Is empirical observation sufficient for making a finding? Or do we have to hire somebody to write up a report to says these are the findings?
I believe what the attorney is saying is if we choose to say so, then it's the fact, and we'll give him a write-off on the fifty-something thousand dollars.
As long as you make the finding, council, and you make it explicit that there is an absence of a reasonable relationship or nexus between the parking impacts of this development and the amount of the fee, then there is substantial evidence that's been presented to you by the applicant and by your own personal observations, and you do not need to hire a consultant to make that conclusion.
No, everything in this town, you have to hire a consultant. It's the only way it works. And then pay them $100,000 to save somebody $4,000.
All right. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to waive the full in lieu parking fees for the Tiki Lounge.
Shall we continue that to say that, as the attorney said, it's the absence of a reasonable relationship between the parking requirements and this particular business?
Yeah.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Infante.
Yes.
Councilmember Aruna.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Urick.
Yeah.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, council.
You're quite welcome, and we would like to apologize for some of the inconvenience of having staff at levels that have been going up and down, and you understand. Thank you very much.
Moving on.
You owe me a drink. Can't say that. That was a joke. That was a joke. Okay, moving right along.
I'm glad you're sitting on that seat.
That's I-N-F-A-N-T-I.
Tell him and enjoy both times. It's his first and his last.
Okay, okay, that can't be funny, that's for sure. All right, item number 10. City clerk, if you would read that into the record, please.
Title IX, drought ordinance modifications and introduction of resolution setting benchmarks for penalties. Adopt ordinance number 220359, modifying city of solving municipal code. Title IX, Water and Sewer, Chapter Three, Water Code. Article D, Water Conservation Program. Nine, three D, three, Regulations During Drought Conditions for Second Reading and Adopt Resolution Number 221186, Affirming the Stage Two Drought Conditions and Setting Benchmarks for Penalties.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, council. So this item is on the agenda for a second reading for the ordinance itself. This is the same information that you received two weeks ago at the last council meeting on June 27th. We're also bringing forward to you for the first step, the review and ordinance that goes along with that. Which really puts into effect the changes for the benchmark. Primarily, the biggest impact will be to how the penalties are being applied to residential customers, moving away from looking at their historic individual address used from a couple of years ago, which was the benchmark set before, to instead looking at the average used by a household. And our utility director, Costa, is available for any additional information or questions.
Any questions?
I.
You want to say anything?
Just want to confirm that this is basically exactly what we looked at two weeks ago with no changes.
That is correct.
Correct. This is exactly, that's exactly what you looked two weeks ago. Though the document that was not presented to you last time was the resolution. So now you're looking at second reading of the ordinance plus the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
No other comments? We'll go to the public. Is there any public comment on this particular issue? Nobody in house? You don't want to talk? Nobody on Zoom is raising their hands? We'll bring it back to the council for final comments and a motion, please. No final comments?
I could make a motion if you want.
Please.
I, I would make a motion that council adopt one ordinance 22-0359, modifying the solving uni code. Title IX, Water and Sewer, Chapter Three, Water Code. Article D, Water Conservation Program. Nine, dash, three, capital D, dash, three, Regulations During Drought Conditions. And item two, Resolution 22-1186, affirming the Stage Two Drought Conditions and adopting amended uni code section nine, dash, three, small d, dash, three, subsection B, mandatory Stage Two Radiations.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Clark. Mayor Protem Infante.
Yes.
Councilmember Aruna.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Urick.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1.
One abstain? Yep.
Thank you, council. Sorry for my long-winded speech up here.
Thanks, Jose. Okay, that pushes us over to agenda item number 11. We voted around you, Robert.
That's fine.
Madam City Clerk, if you would read that into the record, please.
Second Street Drainage and Parking Lot Five Improvements Project Contract Approval. Award the construction contract to V. Lopez Jr. &amp; Sons, General Engineering Contractors, Inc., for the Second Street Drainage and Lot Five Improvements CP 2022-01 in the amount of $912,593, and authorize the city manager to execute any change orders if within a contingency amount of $91,260, and approve a budget amendment for the amount of $1,049,49,853.
Thank you. So council, our public works director, Roger Olds, will be presenting the item in more detail, but I just wanted to preface with a little bit of history on this project. This project was part of the budget and the work program included in fiscal year 21, 22. Due to some of the stock turnover and timing on issuing the RFP, the project came in at the very end of the last fiscal year, which is why you see the entire project being asked to be funded again. That was however, $600,000 set in last year's budget, which has now dropped to fund balance. This project came in higher than was expected due to the current inflation, and we have some solutions on how to work the project, like to back down. However, we are asking you, as a matter of procedure, in order to be able to continue with this project under the actual bid that went out, to go ahead and approve the entire project, and then start over with the contractor, who has more details than that.
Thank you, Zena. Yeah, so we we've put this project out to bid. We opened bids on on June 21st, and.
Close to the mic.
Sorry.
Thank you.
The the bids came back substantially higher than what was expected. The end, the budget item, budget line item was was set a couple of years back at $600,000. Engineer's estimate was $750,000. And the low bid, the bids ranged between 1.3 million and and 913,000. The apparent low bidder is V. Lopez Jr. &amp; Sons, who has, they do have experience doing this type of work. I've personally done work with them with other agencies and completed projects with them. So I've already met with them because of this budget line, because the the bid was well over our budget, and we're already looking at some some cost-saving measures, some elimination of, elimination of scope, which we feel that right out the gate, we'll be able to issue a deductive change order to reduce the scope quite a bit on this project.
A deductive change order?
Yes.
I've never heard that before.
Yeah, it's, you can subtract money from, if you eliminate scope or.
I honestly did not know that.
I've never heard the term.
Because it never gets used.
Well, I'm.
Roger just made that up.
Yeah, deductive change order. Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Do more of that.
Yeah, do more of that.
But we're working on it. That's, that's what we do. So with that, in order to to do any sort of contract change order, we got to have a contract. So that's why we're here. We're we're asking you to award the contract to allow us to then work with our contractor to eliminate scope. One of the big-ticket items that we're looking to eliminate is a, the trash collection structure from our storm drain. This is, we deem this is not really the preferred location to capture trash. There is a, there is a requirement by the regional board that we do have to capture trash in our stormwater to, before it releases to the to the river. But we're we're feeling that the ideal location is at the river to catch the storm drain, catch the, catch the debris there. And that that item alone would lop about $200,000 off the, off this, off this contract.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Then why, why is that particular item not in this proposal right here?
The the item is in the proposal. It's part, it's $200,000 worth of the $913,000 price tag.
Okay, I'm sorry. And and $600,000 of this is already from the previous budget?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we're already earmarked.
Yeah.
And and on a scale of one to 10, how important is this to the city of solving right now?
Well, as far as storm drain goes, as I understand it, it's a pretty important project. It's Phase Two of the Second Street Storm Rain, Storm Rain Project. Phase One was completed a couple of years back. And I can't remember the, there was a hotel that used to get flooded out on Mission quite a bit. And so now we're upsizing the remainder of the pipe. It's 24 inches. We're upsizing to 36 inches.
Okay. Wow. I have a question. Under the alternatives, it it says reject all bids and that the project with a revised design, reducing the scope of the project. What what impact would that have by reducing the scope?
Well, the the impact that would have is mainly time. There would be some, some costs associated with revising the plans, paying a, an engineer to revise the plans accordingly, so that we can bid it again. And then we would lose probably four to six months before we can hit the street. And we would probably, we'd be well into the winter by then.
Wow.
And so we'd probably be pushing the project out.
So that's that's an alternative you don't agree with, then?
I I feel confident that we can deliver this project within or close to the original budget. That we're going to, we're going to work very hard and trim things where we can, do some value engineering, and try to deliver this project within the original budget. But we do need to have an appropriate contingency.
Will this compromise the the quality of the the project? Will it still do what it's supposed to do, or are we cutting corners?
It it will still function. The the main objective for this, this, there's two objectives of this project is, one, to upsize the storm drain, get a 36-inch storm drain all the way from Mission Drive all the way through to the, basically the creek bed right there on the opposite side of Lot Five. And then there are some improvements to Lot Five that are going to, some regrading and basically preparing it for the the other project that's going to happen a little later on, a little later on this year, we should be wrapping up design on, which is the, fully developing the parking lot. So there are some retaining wall structures that are part of the scope as well that we're revisiting to see if there's some cost savings there. But essentially, we're looking to make this project function exactly what what was intended and what was designed. The only function that will not have is the trash collection device, which is, as we've reviewed, the the need for that by the regional board is is not required until 2030.
Okay.
So we have some time on that.
I was under the impression that all the storm water went to the wastewater treatment plant. You're saying that we've got drainage right into the river?
Storm water goes directly to the river, yes. Not not wastewater. This is, you know.
That would be an awful lot of water going into the wastewater treatment plant.
You're maybe confusing that with infiltration water that gets into manholes, but that's, storm water is not directed straight to the wastewater treatment.
Yeah.
Can you talk, can Jose talk into the microphone?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. What I was saying is that I may be getting confused for infiltration of water that enters into sewer manholes minimally. Storm water does not directly get routed to the wastewater treatment plant.
We we collect storm water. There's a series of creeks throughout town and and storm drains, and it gets directed to the river. Makes its way out.
So it just depends on where it enters the system as to where it goes, whether it's actually, okay.
That's, and one of the, one of the projects that we have in this next current, I mean, not related to this item right now, but one of the projects that we do have slated for this next year is to analyze the the entry points to the river by our storm drain system. I, the mapping that I've seen has like seven to eight points. And so we're going to need. And so we're going to need to plan that, because it is a requirement by 2030 that we need to do something. So it's now the time to really start studying that and figuring that out.
So if you put a filter in the system for the drained water, what do you do? How do you clean the filters? Where does that go?
That would be up to staff to go in and collect the trash that's
Just literally open it up, pull it out, clean it, and go put it in the trash?
Yep. And there's various devices. And of course, based on the regional board, you have to have an approved device that but the mandate is nothing larger than a cigarette butt, or even you got to catch cigarette butts, too.
Yeah, cigarette butts are, yeah. But you, okay, so this has street drainage and Lot 5 improvements.
That's correct.
And what Lot 5 improvements are there going to be?
It's, there's a retaining wall included as part of the scope and to basically expand the usable surface of Lot 5. And then just some grading. There's a driveway ramp. Currently, the vehicles that do access Lot 5, they just throw a piece of wood up against the curb and ramp up. So we're putting in a
So it's not paving or any of that nature?
Not paving just yet. No, that's the next project.
That's the next one. All right. Let's check.
Question I have is, we know, or the city manager mentioned that in a future agenda, we are going to be discussing county fire and possibly them appropriating Lot 5. With what improvements that you are planning, is that something that we are going to be able to recoup the cost if something happened down the future? Or is it something we should be waiting on a little bit?
Mayor Urick, that is, with a lot ready to develop with the retaining wall expansion, that's something that if someone were to purchase this property and want to build a building on it, they would probably want to maximize the property as much as they can. So, you know, they would be building a retaining wall. So if we build it now, then that's something that, it makes the lot more valuable. Now, whether we would get full compensation for that or not, the retaining wall and the guardrail that goes up, it's about, it's about $150,000 total for that scope of work. And again, we're going to look to try to reduce that as much as we can by value engineering that retaining wall. But that is, certainly, certainly, we could propose that if there is negotiation for the lot to say that we spent this much money to develop the lot and get it ready for you, and we want that much back.
Interesting. Any other questions of the staff?
No.
Any public comment? No? Anybody on Zoom wish to make a comment? So who's on the beach? I don't even see anybody there anymore.
That was Ms. Wills.
Oh, okay.
That's her background.
Bringing it back, bringing it back to the council. Last comments, motions? Anything?
As it's already, the previous amount was, $600,000 was already in the previous budget. Needs to get done. I will make a motion that we award a construction contract to V. Lopez &amp; Sons Engineering for the Second Street Drainage and Lot 5 Improvement CP 2002-01.
I'll second it.
And a motion and second? Please roll, call the roll.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Infante?
Yes.
Councilmember Aruna?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Urick?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Do we need to vote on the A and the B?
That would be good, council. Yes, please.
And I'll make the motion to approve the budget adjustment in the amount of $1,049,000, $1,049,853.
And I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Infante?
Yes.
Councilmember Aruna?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Urick?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Do we need to do the authorize to the city manager to execute any change order with a contingency amount of that 10% essentially? Does that, I mean, that would be
That was B.
You did A and B. Got it. Thank you.
I started
I'm sorry, council. I didn't hear whether or not the budget adjustment was part of that. I'm sorry. I was focusing on the A.
Yes.
We approved B as well?
We made a second motion and approved B.
And how about C then, the budget adjustment?
No, that was
That's where I was confused. I believe we took A as a combination of A and B and C for the $1,049 was what we used as number two or B. That was why I was asking if we should separate the first one out. I believe it needs to be two separate motions. So do we have a total of three motions, not two that encompasses A and B?
Well, A has the two parts to it.
But it had the $91,000 he's talking about on top of the $912,593. I think that's what they're discussing.
But when you approve, well, didn't we approve that as part of approving A?
Maybe because I didn't read the entire
We didn't. That was why I brought it up.
Okay, one last motion.
I apologize. Do we start over?
No. I'll just make the motion that we authorize the city manager to execute any change orders if within a contingency amount of $91,260.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Infante?
Yes.
Councilmember Aruna?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Urick?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mayor. Appreciate it. All right.
Our council's lead.
Okay, we are at Item 12, which is the AB 1234 report. Anybody have one of those?
Got nothing.
Closing comments. Besides that I shouldn't make any jokes anymore? In that case, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned at 9:00. What is that, 6:6? We're out of here.